For all in attendance, today's meeting is livestreamed and is also available as a video. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If there is no objection, the open session agenda is adopted as the order of business. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair for the commission, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run this February open session, which is our first agenda item. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And who are we moving for? I want you to say it.
Vice Chairman Gallus, please, would you do us a favor of running this meeting? That's my motion.
Well, okay, and it's been seconded, so thank you very much.
I'll third.
We're third, all right. So, there's been a motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed. Thank you. The motion carries. So let's move to Agenda Item 2, which is my report. And I just want to note that although I wasn't able to be there, today, several of the commissioners had an opportunity to tour the under-construction Martin Luther King Jr. Library just down the street from here. The commission reviewed this major renovation project last year. It's a Mies Van der Rohe-designed building, and it's a stunning building that's going to be even more beautiful, from what I understand, after hearing some of the reports about the tour. This building is the main branch of the D.C. Public Library system. And so even though I wasn't able to be there, I want to thank the library and the construction team for hosting us today. Okay, let's move to Agenda Item 3, the report from the Executive Director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to announce that NCPC's 2019 annual report called "Embracing Space and Place" is now available. You can find it on our website. Many thanks to our Office of Public Engagement for producing this report. On January 23rd, we hosted a very successful master planning workshop with more than 50 Department of Defense installation planners and urban collaborative, a firm with expertise in military installation planning. And many thanks to Diane Sullivan and Mike Wile for organizing that very important training session. We are still accepting public comments on our monumental core streetscape framework and lighting policy. The draft policy can be found on our website, and we will accept comments through March 14th. And finally, after 20 years of service to the agency, we wish Architect Urban Designer Ken Walton a fond farewell. We thank Ken for his many contributions to NCPC over the years, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. And that is my report for today. You have a written copy in front of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Costa. Agenda Item 4 is our legislative update. Ms. Schuyler?
Mr. Vice Chair, I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you'll have lots next month to make up for it. Okay, let's go to Agenda Item 5, which is the Consent Calendar. There are three Consent Counter items on this month's agenda. The first item is for a modification of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Judiciary Square. This will allow more names to be added to that important memorial. That was submitted by the National Park Service. The second item is for the Herbert R. Temple Jr. Army National Guard Readiness Visitor Center on George Mason Drive in Arlington, Virginia. This proposal was submitted by the Department of Defense. The third item is for the Eastern Market Metro Park improvements submitted by the D.C. Department of General Services. Is there any discussion on any of the Consent Calendar items? Mr. May?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a note that on the Eastern Market Metro Plaza improvements, part of that land that would be affected by these improvements are the median strips that are under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. Don't ask me to explain why, but they are. And I think there's some measure of further coordination that's needed on the ongoing or the future maintenance of that space. I know that there has been some conversation, but I don't think everything has been completed. If it has, I apologize, but I wanted to make sure that it was noted on the record that we need to continue those conversations so that it can be built out as designed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar? And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now turn to Agenda Item 6A, which is to approve comments on the draft master plan amendment for the National Institutes of Health. Mr. Wile will kick us off here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The United States Department of Health and Human Services has submitted a draft amendment to its 2013 NIH Bethesda Campus Master Plan. The amendment would enable NIH to construct two new projects that are not included in the 2013 plan. The first, a new combined six-level, 780-space parking garage and utility vault. And the second project, a new 527,000-square-foot, eight-story addition to their main clinical center complex building. The current submission is a draft amendment, and NIH will submit the amendment for final review by the commission prior to future individual submissions for the new garage, vault, and clinical center addition. And this is, as this is a draft amendment review, we are considering broader planning issues like scale, bulk, and development heights, overall impacts to parking, and potential historic and environmental impacts from future development projects. The NIH main campus in Bethesda currently encompasses 310 acres, with Rockville Pike to the east, Old Georgetown Road to the west, West Cedar Lane to the north, and residential neighborhoods along its southern edge. You will notice that the campus is situated immediately to the north of downtown Bethesda, with the Naval Support Activity Bethesda Installation to the east, Suburban Hospital on the west, and the I-495 Beltway approximately a mile to the north. The campus also enjoys direct metro rail access from the medical center station along its east side. Starting with three buildings on 45 acres of land in 1938, the campus has grown steadily over the years to approximately 75 buildings and 20,725 personnel. The NIH mission is to seek fundamental knowledge about the nature and behavior of living systems and the application of that knowledge to enhance health, lengthen life, and reduce the burdens of illness and disability. The current 2013 master plan includes a maximum total of 1.6 million square feet of new research space and 775,000 square feet of new administrative support space, with notable projects including a new 600,000-square-foot, 17-story office tower, a new 775,000-square-foot, four-level laboratory building, and three new parking garages identified as MLP 12, 13, and 14 in the plan, although none of these projects have been constructed to date. Here are the two new projects that are proposed through the master plan amendment before you: a new combined garage and utility vault, and in addition to the clinical center, which is formally identified as the Surgery/Radiology/Laboratory Medicine Edition. As you can see from the slide, the new garage/utility vault footprint is notable at approximately 55,000 square feet and 500 feet in length. Staff notes that the amendment preserves many of the planning principles from the 2013 plan, including the 250-foot-wide landscape perimeter buffer area, the campus's tapered building height limit, and campus efforts to cluster development on the site. Some of these strategies have been in effect since NIH predecessor 2005 master plan, intended to transform the campus into a more sustainable, attractive, secure, functional workplace for innovative research. Starting with the clinical center addition, the information provided in the amendment's submission is very preliminary. However, staff did not see any planning issues with the proposal. Information provided by the NIH describes the project as a necessary expansion to the clinical center without significant disruption to hospital operations and to co-locate new space with existing functions inside the building. NIH identified the project site as the most preferable alternative compared to other potential relocation and renovation options. The new addition would not violate the site's tiered height restriction, which is intended to minimize views of campus development from nearby surrounding residential communities. And one last note, the new addition will extend the large clinical center closer to adjacent roadway, thereby creating a more urban appearance and additional visual interest when entering onto the campus from Old Georgetown Road. And you will see each of these points reflected in the final Executive Director's recommendation. Regarding campus parking as background, the commission previously recommended our 1-3 comprehensive plan goal to NIH as part of three separate master plan review actions. Starting in November 2012, commissioners commented on the draft master plan with a recommendation to amend the plan to comply with our 1-3 goal, which was adopted through our 2004 comprehensive plan. In April 2015, NIH submitted their final master plan. However, NCPC disapproved the plan based on its failure to reduce parking to meet the 1-3 goal. Finally, in January 2016, as a way forward, NIH and NCPC agreed to an interim parking cap with the expectation that NIH would submit a new update in 2018 that showed a path forward to attaining the 1-3 goal. However, an update was never developed. And that brings us to the current proposed master plan amendment. As context, the NIH campus is situated in a relatively accessible part of the county, directly adjacent to the Medical Center metro rail station midway between downtown Washington and Shady Grove along the Red Line, with connecting ride-on and metro bus service, space for commuter drop-off traffic, and transit service from multiple NIH shuttle routes. Its location directly north of downtown Bethesda also benefits the campus, offering good bicycle and pedestrian accessibility with commercial development and residential neighborhoods nearby. The state is also constructing the Purple Line Light Rail Transit Facility, which will terminate one metro stop to the south of the NIH campus, and Montgomery County plans to initiate future BRT service along Rockville Pike adjacent to the campus. NIH is proposing the new garage to replace visitor, patient, and employee parking from under the clinical center, as well as parking that has been removed for construction staging in other parts of the campus. NIH plans to use the below-grade clinical center garage space for other uses to reduce costs associated with maintaining the space for parking, as well as eliminating a need for secondary vehicle security screening. The new garage would largely maintain the status quo with employee parking capacity on campus, however, which is significantly less than NCPC's 1-3 comprehensive plan goal. And NCPC staff remains unclear about how NIH will ultimately achieve its 1-3 goal without a defined parking reduction plan. As such, staff will be recommending that the commission advise the applicant that NIH will not formally review the parking garage until NIH develops a detailed plan to reduce parking. And this is based on our history of recommending the 1-3 goal, as well as support from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and other local officials, both during our 2013 master plan review and as expressed through a recent letter from County Councilman Andrew Freedson, and testimony that you will hear from park and planning staff after I conclude my presentation. As part of our review, in an effort to initiate a future reduction plan, NCPC staff has identified several potential actions that NIH could take, including converting nearby employee parking in the MLP 9 garage to visitor and patient use only, eliminating or reducing the size of the proposed new MLP 15 garage, eliminating one of the planned garages shown in the 2013 plan, MLP 12, 13, or 14, and/or removing surface parking through construction staging with no replacement parking added. And these are just some initial proposals, which we include in the final Executive Director's Regarding the final planning topic that we address in our draft amendment review, should the commission accept the new garage within the context of a future parking reduction plan, staff would like to note several concerns with the garage/utility vault's current design and proposed location. The project site is shown here on a 135 space terrace surface lot adjacent to a historic property known as the convent, which is owned and used by NIH for visiting research students. The property, with a historic convent building from 1923, is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places with character-defining features including its perimeter wall layout, picturesque grounds defined by winding footpaths, open lawn areas, and a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, and several remaining sections of the original terracotta perimeter wall. Here are several ground views facing toward the east, across where the new garage/utility vault structure would be located. The top photo shows the clinical center and nearby adjacent MLP 9 garage in the distance, with a closer section of the historic terracotta wall extending across this view. Photo number 2 at the bottom shows a more southeasterly view toward a stone grotto on the convent grounds, with heavier vegetation that obscures the project site off in the distance. Here are two other views just on the other side of the convent perimeter wall: the top looking northeast across the new garage/utility vault site in photo number 1, and directly east across the project site towards the clinical center and adjacent MLP 9 garage in the bottom photo. NCPC comprehensive plan policies do encourage structured parking and redevelopment of sites rather than greenfield development. However, the new garage/utility vault would likely have significant adverse visual impacts to the adjacent convent, with its current six-level design potentially creating an abrupt visual wall along the property's eastern edge. While additional landscaping may help somewhat hide views of the new structure, visual intrusion onto the convent property would likely result in an adverse effect under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. Before developing potential mitigation for the current garage/vault design, however, NIH should consider other avoidance and minimization measures related to overall campus-wide parking reduction, which may include reducing the size of the new garage or eliminating the garage altogether. As previously described, the current master plan amendment largely maintains the existing campus parking ratio with no plan for improvement towards the 1-3 goal. Therefore, staff will recommend that NIH evaluate ways to reduce the visual impact of the new garage on the convent property with height and massing modifications and a robust landscape plan should NIH decide to submit the project for future commission review within the context of a future parking reduction plan. And one last point, NIH has initiated consultation with the Maryland Historic Trust on the project, and the trust has requested additional follow-up information related to perimeter wall protection and potential landscaping plans. And we do support the trust's request and the final Executive Director's recommendation as well. Here is the list of additional information that we are recommending that the commission request as part of the final amendment submission, including a detailed parking reduction plan that complies with our 1-3 goal, a copy of the draft EIS for the clinical center addition and garage/utility vault projects, several day and nighttime visualizations of the new garage/utility vault from the grounds of the convent property should that project proceed, and the follow-up materials as requested by the Maryland Historic Trust. So with that, I'll now go through the Executive Director's recommendation. The first part notes that NIH last updated their campus plan in 2013, that the proposed amendment includes the two projects as previously mentioned, that NIH is developing an EIS for the two projects, and they will submit that to NCPC for future review, and that the proposed amendment would preserve many planning principles from the 2013 master plan, including the landscape perimeter buffer area, the campus's tapered height limit, and NIH's desire for clustered development. Regarding the new Surgery/Radiology/Laboratory Medicine Edition, we note the need for the project, and we recommend support for its location. We find that the design would not violate the site's height restriction, and we support the new addition's design approach as shown through the submitted materials. And as a side note here, we did revise the EDR to reflect the new addition's correct size at 527,000 square feet rather than the 630,000 square feet, which was previously reflected in an earlier version of the final EDR draft. Regarding campus parking, we note that NCPC's final 2013 master plan approval included an interim cap on employee parking with the expectation that NIH would submit an updated master plan in 2018, and the commission would continue to recommend compliance with the 1-3 comprehensive goal. We note that NIH did not submit a master plan update, however, and that the current amendment does not include a commitment or path toward attaining the 1-3 goal. We recommend that the commission find that the current parking ratio of 1-2.4 and future proposed ratio with the construction of the new garage at a 1-2.3 ratio, both of these are significantly less than our 1-3 goal. We find that NIH would need to reduce its employee parking capacity by approximately 800 spaces to attain the 1-3 goal for the campus. And finally, we recommend that NCPC advise NIH that we will not review the new parking garage until NIH develops a detailed plan to reduce employee parking with an immediate short-term reduction, as well as clear milestones and strategies for attaining the 1-3 long-term goal over the next 20 years, and that potential actions may include conversion of the MLP 9 garage to visitor and patient use only, eliminating or reducing the size of the proposed MLP 15 garage, eliminating one of the future planned MLP 12, 13, or 14 garages, and/or eliminating parking elsewhere on campus. In the next section, which pertains to the design of the new garage/utility vault and its proposed location, we note the project location adjacent to the historic property is identified as the convent, as well as several character-defining features. We know that the Maryland Historic Trust requires additional information to continue its Section 106 consultation process. We recommend that the commission find that while structured parking is preferable to surface parking, and the current garage/utility vault design would have a significant impact to the views and setting of the convent, and these would likely result in an adverse effect under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And lastly, we recommend that NIH evaluate ways to reduce the visual impact of the new garage on the convent property, to include modifications to the garage height and massing, and the development of a robust landscape should NIH submit the project for future review by our commission. And here is a list of the additional information that we request through the Executive Director's recommendation, which I previously covered in an earlier slide. And with that, that concludes my staff presentation, and I would now like to introduce Mr. Dan Wieland from NIH, who serves as Director for their Office of Research Facilities, and he would now like to make a statement on behalf of their amendment project submission.
Welcome, Mr. Wieland.
Thank you. I want to thank Mike and Diane for a very thorough review of our projects, and I want to thank you for your time today. The projects before the commission are critical projects in support of patient safety and patient care. As you know, the NIH Clinical Center is the largest hospital in the world devoted exclusively to research, and the clinical center departments of Surgery/Radiology and Laboratory Medicine are housed in outdated facilities. An independent study conducted in 2011 reviewed the space assigned to these departments and found that, both in terms of quantity and quality of space, they are woefully inadequate. As a result, NIH began analyses that examined technical solutions that meet various criteria, including functionality, constructability, affordability, security, energy conservation, historic preservation, and other factors. Recently, at the direction of Congress, the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine commissioned an ad hoc committee to conduct another analysis. The results of this study were released this past August, are publicly available, and corroborated the need to address the deficiencies that I described a few minutes ago. As an example, due to deteriorating conditions, including corrosion, we regularly have leaks in these areas resulting in disruptions to patient exams, procedures, and diagnostics. The existing parking garage, which is below the clinical center, is suffering from spalling concrete and necessitates costly vehicle inspections for security purposes because it is under an occupied building. The Surgery/Radiology and Laboratory Medicine Project and the Utility Vault/Parking Garage Project will address some of our highest risks and vulnerabilities. They need to be constructed. If we do not construct the Parking Garage/Utility Vault, we will not have space to house the electrical equipment for the new wing. Our patients, physicians, scientists, surgeons, radiologists, and pathologists need safe, reliable facilities to enable their pursuit of discoveries of new diagnostics, therapeutics, and cures for ailments including infectious diseases like the coronavirus, cancer, heart disease, sickle cell anemia, diabetes, macular degeneration, Alzheimer's disease, and more. Regarding the parking ratio, I have a few thoughts to offer. But first, on a personal level, I fully support sustainable commuting. While at graduate school at Cal Berkeley, I proudly took the Bay Area Rapid Transit every day that I went to school. And when my wife, daughter, and I moved from Sicily while serving with the Navy, we bought a house in Bethesda within striking distance of the Medical Center metro station. And for six years while I was serving with the Navy, I took the metro every day. So I've bought in fully to that concept. And now I proudly, by sheer coincidence, was selected for a position at NIH, and I walk to work every day. So I'm doing my part to take a car off the road, and I walk the talk. Not everyone, regretfully, is as fortunate as I, though. NIH post-docs, often swimming in student debt, have real challenges finding affordable housing in Bethesda or anywhere close to metro. It's no secret that the cost of housing in Bethesda is one of the highest in the nation, and one pays an additional premium for proximity to metro. Many of these same young scientists are raising a family as well, juggling their professional responsibilities with raising children. So finding affordable childcare that is compatible with commuting is challenging. And I suspect my colleagues here have the same challenges in their agencies as well. Many of our senior employees are juggling elder care on top of their day-to-day responsibilities. So behind these statistics and ratios are real human beings who are trying to accomplish the respective missions of the federal agencies that they serve in. And I view my job as providing federal employees and physician scientists with tools that enable them to focus on their day-to-day responsibilities and not be distracted by the logistics of getting from home to work and back again safely and soundly. Enabling scientists to commute from home to work and back again safely is important in attracting, training, and retaining world-class scientists and to conduct world-class research. With that as context, I have a few more thoughts to share. First of all, it's my conviction that NIH has been a great neighbor to the community that surrounds it. In 1984, we embraced the opportunities associated with metro rail and granted an easement of 4.47 acres to Womata that resulted in the development of what is now a vibrant multimodal hub involving metro rail, metro bus, ride-on, a kiss-and-ride lot, and bicycle sharing. So for nearly 40 years, the use of NIH's land has benefited not only NIH, but the Navy, Suburban Hospital, now Walter Reed, and the surrounding community by hosting this vital mass transit hub. Without this easement, this important multimodal transportation hub that is often taken for granted would not be possible. In 1991, NIH granted easements of two acres to facilitate the extension of Woodmont Avenue to provide crucial access from 355 to the Bethesda Central Business District and alleviate congestion for thousands of motorists every day of the week in downtown Bethesda. In 2006, NIH granted an easement of 4.39 acres to Montgomery County to construct a stormwater retention pond on the southeastern portion of the campus. This facility has allowed the Bethesda Central Business District to develop additional impervious surfaces that would have otherwise not been possible. Between 2011 and 2015, NIH granted four easements totaling 3.28 acres of land to facilitate intersection widening projects that significantly benefit the community on a daily basis. So NIH has contributed significantly and directly to improving the transportation infrastructure that benefits the entire region. Over the years, NIH has done its part to minimize its consumption of the transportation infrastructure. There is a misconception, I think, that the parking ratio is a direct predictor of congestion. Actually, what is important to the surrounding community is AM and PM peak traffic counts. If a nurse arrives at 11:00 p.m. to begin his or her shift, that is not really impacting congestion the same way that a 9:00 to 5:00 worker does. If an employee who may be a maintenance mechanic arrives at 6:00 a.m. and departs at 3:00 p.m., that's not contributing to the AM and PM peak. Over the years, we've dramatically reduced AM and PM peak, benefiting both our own commuters because we suffer from the same because we suffer from the same impacts of congestion that others do, and the community benefits. Many NIH staff telework for portions of the day so they can come in for a meeting and then go home before the AM or PM, or before the PM peak. Nearly 5,000 employees take advantage of Transhare, the federal mass transit subsidy. Additionally, we have 178 staff who carpool, and 168 who vanpool, and many bike and walk. We have the largest bicycle participation rate in the federal government. Approximately 5,000 people telework regularly in the conduct of their duties. Unfortunately, as you can appreciate operating a hospital and biomedical research, not everyone can telework regularly. Physicians, nurses, firefighters, police officers, food service specialists, maintenance mechanics, and more cannot really telework. So my first message is NIH is a good neighbor. We've contributed to the transportation infrastructure, and we've tried to do our part to reduce the impact that we place on the transportation infrastructure. Second message is that NIH contributes substantially to the community. For decades, Montgomery County has aspired to become a life sciences center of excellence. Thanks in large measure to NIH, that vision has become a reality. In fiscal year 2019 alone, NIH awarded research grants in excess of $1.92 billion to institutions in Maryland, many of whom are located in Montgomery County. Additionally, the salaries of NIH employees and contractors generate significant income, estimated at $2 billion on top of that. The salaries of those employees generate significant income, property, and sales revenue for the state and county. NIH staff buy and rent homes and apartments, shop in the stores, and dine in the restaurants. In addition to those direct economic contributions, private sector life science organizations have brought important jobs to this region, especially along the I-270 corridor. They enjoy the synergies with NIH investigators, and NIH has become a powerful magnet, creating countless opportunities for businesses that have come to depend heavily on NIH. The third message is that the NIH parking ratio was addressed in writing five years ago. In 2015, NIH deleted nearly 3,000 parking spaces from its 2013 through 2033 master plan. We did that despite the fact that that would have enabled us to achieve many scientific and logistical efficiency improvements, and in doing so, we agreed to a cap of our employee parking of approximately 9,000 spaces. That agreement consummated by the Executive Director of NCPC and the Deputy Director for Management of NIH is still in effect. The parking garage in question today does not impact that 2015 agreement in the slightest. For each space added, a legacy space will be decommissioned. The NCPC Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element states that parking ratios should be applied and enforced with "thoughtful consideration," unquote, "flexibility," unquote, and "relative to its own unique situation," unquote. The NCPC Transportation Element goes on to say that "each federal facility's parking ratio will be evaluated independently," unquote. By NCPC's own language, the one-to-three parking ratio was characterized as a goal, and that each circumstance should be viewed with professional judgment. NIH never promised to adhere to the one-to-three ratio. The parking cap was a compromise and consistent with the NC Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element that states that parking ratios should be applied and enforced with "thoughtful consideration," unquote. The fourth message is that this problem is much larger than NIH. In its final environmental impact statement associated with the 2013 through 2033 master plan, NIH included data regarding peak traffic. A very telling statistic that was included in Section 4 illustrates that the total traffic along Wrightville Pike and the NIH subset of it are as follows. NIH only represents 5% to 7% of this traffic. I encourage anyone to go to the corner of Wisconsin Avenue and Jones Bridge Road in the AM peak, and look to your south, and you will find a congested artery. It will only worsen, I'm afraid. We are concerned that the high-density development in downtown Bethesda, which is highly visible with seven tower cranes currently constructing high-rise buildings, will exacerbate congestion, both in terms of roads and Metro Rail accessibility. The red line is already saturated. We have employees who live in Rockville who have to drive north to Shady Grove to try to find a parking space to get on the red line, and once on the train, they find standing room only. With 3,500 future Marriott employees needing a way of commuting from home to work, we are concerned that it will make it even more difficult for NIH staff to use metro in the future. By the way, the saturated state of the red line is not news to anyone here. Page 80 of the NCPC Comprehensive Plan of August 2004, 16 years ago, stated that portions of the Metro Rail system are operating beyond capacity. New investments in buses, railcars, operation and maintenance facilities, and personnel are needed to accommodate the region's growing number of transit riders. So, you know, in the spirit of partnership, let's discuss a few solutions. First, the issue of traffic congestion affects all public organizations, federal, state, county, and municipal. It affects for-profit and nonprofit firms; it affects residents and visitors. NIH believes it is important for all organizations, especially other large employers in the region, to consider implementing parking demand strategies. NIH is highly supportive of the Bus Rapid Transit program. However, to our knowledge, construction funding has not been provided for the portion of the network that would serve our area. While studies and analyses are necessary and important, they are insufficient since the real costs of such a system involve construction and easements that have yet to be funded. Another solution that we would just throw out there is that currently, under federal law, federal employees are authorized to use the Transshare program, the federal mass transit subsidy. And approximately, as I stated before, 5,000 NIH employees use that program regularly. If federal contractors who work side-by-side with federal employees were enabled to use this important program, I believe that there would be a dramatic improvement in congestion, a reduction in congestion across the national capital region. To my knowledge, there is no pending legislation that would enable the use of that. Currently, NIH contractors who are side-by-side with NIH employees have no access to a comparable transit subsidy program. In summary, NIH has consistently demonstrated its strong commitment to serving as a good neighbor. We contribute significantly to the state of Maryland and Montgomery County in terms of jobs and tax revenue, and enabling Montgomery County to achieve its vision of a life sciences center of excellence. NIH is adhering to the 2015 bilaterally signed agreement that involved major concessions by eliminating planned parking and by capping its employee parking spots. And NIH will continue to pursue opportunities to be good neighbors well into the future. We thank you for this opportunity to be present at this hearing today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whelan. I think before we have any questions for you, I'd like to note a couple things. We have two public comments that we received. One was from Montgomery County Councilmember Andrew Friedson, and the other was from Lindsay Williams, which are at your place as hard copy commissioners. Also, we have one person sign up to speak today, and I'd like to invite Mr. Matthew Folden to come up. I don't know if you've provided your testimony yet. Would you be so kind as to do that after you speak? Mr. Folden, you're representing the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, and you have five minutes to speak. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm actually sitting in for Matt Folden today. I'm Robert Kronenberg, the Deputy Director at Montgomery County Planning. Matt is out with the flu, so it's probably better he's home. I'm here today as a representative from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and the Planning Department, and I'm pleased to provide the following statement summarizing the Montgomery County Planning Board's formal position on a constrained parking policy on the Bethesda NIH campus. The last time the NIH master plan was reviewed by the Planning Board, on May 22, 2014, the Board formally supported the National Capitol Planning Commission's recommendation that the NIH campus achieve a parking ratio of one space for every three employees. Although the Planning Board has not reviewed the subject 2020 NIH Master Plan Amendment, the Board's recommendation for a one-to-three parking ratio would remain in effect. Since the Board's May 2014 public hearing, the Montgomery County Council has adopted a new sector plan for downtown Bethesda immediately to the south of the NIH campus. Just to highlight, that sector plan specifically promotes, one, an increase in non-auto driver travel, and, two, a constrained parking policy for the downtown area. The sector plan goes on to recommend that the combined average of employee and residential and resident non-auto driver mode share reach 55% as a combined average in order to reduce traffic congestion on the local road network. The one-to-three parking ratio recommended by NCPC and supported by the Planning Board directly aligns the Bethesda Downtown Sector Plan's vision of an increased non-auto driver mode share, while a parking supply above the NCPC-recommended one-to-three ratio introduces demand for single occupancy vehicles and undermines the transportation demand management strategies in place to increase the percentage of non-auto driver mode share. There are significant transportation improvements scheduled for the Wisconsin Avenue corridor in downtown Bethesda that will further promote and encourage reduced parking strategies, and the non-auto driver mode share, including but not limited to the opening of the Purple Line, which will have a direct connection to the metro's red line, the planned Wisconsin Bus Rapid Transit, which will connect the northern segment of Montgomery County to Bethesda, and many high-quality bicycle facilities which extend the reach of transit and offer additional travel options. If NIH likes to move forward with the proposed master plan amendment, in our opinion, we, the Board and staff, would appreciate the opportunity to review mandatory referral and draft EIS for us to weigh in on during that. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kronenberg. I know, since we'll have a little bit of discussion here, so maybe we could talk about the parking ratio first, and then address the actual buildings, whether they be the new addition or the garage in terms of its design and impact on the historical aspect. So let's try to organize around that. Who'd like to start with Ms. Jermaine? Give me that. I love it when you give me that look.
I'd be very happy if somebody else wanted to start, but I can go first. All right. So...
Aren't we going to say very similar things?
Yeah.
Again?
Mr. Whelan, maybe you want to stand up? So, just because there'll be a few questions. So, did you actually watch the video from the last meeting when we discussed this, or read the transcript?
Yes.
Okay. So you're aware of the questions that were raised then?
Yes.
And how difficult that was?
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm not intending to sort of put you through the same wringer. I appreciate the fact that you are personally committed to sustainable transportation. However, I have to say with all frankness that what we see today is really, truly lacking, and it is not reflective of the compromise that was made several years ago in order to get us to the cap and the goal of one to three as the parking ratio. I mean, the way I see it, well, first I have a question. How many parking spaces are actually being lost with the Clinical Center complex replacement?
They will be on a one-to-one basis.
So you're losing 780?
And...
And you're gaining?
So they're...
I'm sorry, you need to speak a little more loudly?
Sure. For every, consistent with the agreement that we have with Mr. Acosta, every...
No, that's with the commission, but he signed it.
Well, he's the executive director.
I know, he signed it on our behalf.
I have a copy here for anyone who would be interested.
No, that's okay.
We have a copy.
Yeah.
Well, it may be of interest to others because it's different from what the colleagues have described.
Okay. Well, you know, maybe we'll get into that, but if you could just answer the question, how many spaces are being lost that you're trying to replace? There are 780 spaces underneath the Clinical Center complex?
No, there are more.
There are more? So how do we go from 1 to 2.4 to 1 to...
1.4.
No, 1 to 2.3. So there's a slight reduction in the total number of spaces?
There's a...
No, it's an increase. It's more.
If I may...
Went from 2.3 to 2.4?
So basically, I believe there's about 1,200 spaces total underneath the Clinical Center.
Got it.
The garage is going to basically replace about 350 of those spaces in a Phase 1. They're replacing the, it's, the project site is on a surface lot, an existing lot, with 135 spaces, so they're going to replace those spaces. They're also going to replace about 200 spaces or so that, from other parts of the campus that have been gradually lost as part of construction staging.
Okay. But there's a net increase in the number of spaces that are available?
It's basically a one-to-one replacement. Right now, it's, they've gradually reduced their parking over the last couple of years, so now they're at a 2.4, and it's basically restoring all of the employee parking from under the Clinical Center elsewhere on the campus back down to the 2.4.
So how do we get from 2.4 to 2.3?
So they are, yes, they are, they are increasing, at the time of the master plan, they had 8,994 spaces, and you're right, they're bringing it back up to that...
Back up to that level.
8,994 number of spaces.
All right. Okay, thank you. That was confusing, but I understand.
So you're right. Sorry. You're right, they are increasing over what they have today.
So, I mean, there are many, many things to say about this. So I'll just make a few comments. I mean, in the spirit of the agreement, I understand that we were expecting to get a master plan in 2018, and that didn't happen. Now, you're proposing an amendment that's going to add a 780-space garage, but you actually need to lose 800 spaces in addition to gaining 3,000 employees in order to get to 1.3. So, and you're, I'm puzzled as to why there's even a parking garage. Why isn't the plan based on, you know, you know you're going to have to lose these spaces under the building, you know you're going to have to lose some other spaces around, you're going to have to add employees. Why isn't the plan focused on how you manage the parking resource and push the staff into more sustainable transportation methods? Why, I just don't see a purpose in building this garage at all, and that would help address the problem with the visual impacts that the garage has.
Sure, that's a fair question. The Clinical Center is, as a lot of hospitals, it runs 24/7, 365, and it's important that the Clinical Center staff be reasonably proximate to the building that they serve in. Two years ago, we had a nurse who wasn't able to find parking within proximity of the Clinical Center, fell in the snowstorm, broke her leg, and was seriously injured, and was by Sherlock discovered by our Division of Police. We want to have our Clinical Center staff have access to safe, reliable parking within proximity of the Clinical Center, and this is a spot that is feasible and suitable. It would offer an underground tunnel to our staff to access the Clinical Center, as well as for patients and visitors. The parking underneath the facility is characterized by spalling concrete, and we don't think it's conducive to good patient care to have concrete fall on patients' heads, and that's...
Or anybody's head.
Or anybody's heads, for that matter. So we want the parking in a location where it'll be secure, and if there were an explosives-laden car, you can appreciate the risks associated with that. We, consistent with federal regulations, don't... We, consistent with federal regulations, don't want to plan for parking underneath occupied buildings. I think all of you face that same challenge. And it should be safe for our patients, visitors, and staff to get to and from the clinical center. That's not too much to ask. It's consistent with the agreement that I have in writing to cap our parking. As previously stated, the NCPC transportation element requires a thoughtful discussion.
That's what you have right now. Thoughtful, thoughtful consideration.
Right.
That's what we do.
So there is, there is no pure one-to-three regulation or law. This is a goal that we're talking about, we're negotiating, we've negotiated in 2015. We stand by our negotiation. If the, if the commission does not want to stand by its signature, which I have in writing here, then we will.
I'm sorry, no, okay, thank you very much. Now it's my turn to talk. So the goal is something that we are expecting to be met. And the thoughtful consideration that goes into this at this point has to do with how you are going to meet it and how long it will take. And if you had come in with a master plan amendment that talked about how you intend to meet that goal and how it would be timed, and if it took you longer than we would ordinarily expect because of whatever the exceptional circumstance is, I think you'd find a more receptive discussion. But what you've basically told us is a repeat of what we heard before, which is that NIH believes that it is special and it does not need to comply with the kinds of regulations and guidelines that NCPC promulgates for all federal agencies and applies to all federal agencies. You're not the only ones who are subjected to this, and, but you seem to be the one that doesn't want to comply. And it's really unfortunate because you have a metro station. So many agencies don't have a metro station. You have it, it's right there. You make it sound like it was your gift to the community because you gave up four acres for it, but it's not. It's there for you, it's there for your employees, and it should be used. I, you know, the fact that there are other contributors to traffic, we don't control those, or 90% of them we don't control. The ones that we do have some influence over, we want to do our part as the federal government to try to meet those objectives. And what we're getting is a stiff arm from NIH. I'm not sure what else I would, I would say. I mean, I would, I could go on and on, say the same things over and over again. I just feel like we're, you know, we're, your agency is not being responsive. And I don't, we are, I think, very willing to give it thoughtful consideration and to be flexible, but what I do not see is the intention on the part of your agency to meet the, these goals in any way, shape, or form.
Just like to ask a question. The master plan for the campus, where are you in that, in your efforts right now? The update, the update to the plan?
So we developed a 2013 through 2033 master plan.
Right.
And.
Where were they?
For efficiencies, we submitted to you on an exception, to sort of manage by exception basis, what changed. Most of the investments contemplated did not change. So we targeted our planning efforts on the changes to the 2013 through 2033 master plan. We wouldn't bring to you a 400-page document restating all of the things that are the same from the 2013 through 2033 master plan. That's a sound use of precious resources. We focused on what changed, not the, not a restatement of what we've already provided to you five years ago.
Okay. Commissioner White.
I'm going to try to be polite to you because you weren't here yourself last time. But, but I, in many ways, feel like it's more than NIH deserves because your actions as an agency have been disrespectful of this commission blatantly and repeatedly over a decade. And I can tell you right now, I'm going to vote no. And I'm going to vote no because we asked you very politely with a great deal of respect last time you were here. The request for an 18 resubmission and update, you find, well, you're above that, too. And you, and I have to say, it's, it's really difficult to listen to you begin. Who's going to argue with the mission of NIH? Not me. But it does feel, you know, I said to my fellow commissioners earlier, I wish we'd reviewed this on Monday. That was Groundhog Day because that would be more appropriate. This is exactly the same set of data, in effect, with things moved around a little bit, that we saw 15, five years ago and told you then. It was unacceptable. And I got a big lecture about how, you know, NIH doctors aren't normal people. I was married to a doctor for 15 years. I agree with you about that. But that doesn't mean that they can't be like the rest of us. We all have children, we all, well, no, we don't all have children, but we all have daycare obligations and family obligations, elder obligations, every, normal people, these are all normal constraints that everybody, all us mere mortals, have to deal with. And yet, we're told that your, your bunch is not normal. I'm so sorry that the nurse fell down and broke her leg, but I'm not really sure that that has, that, that justifies. One, I mean, it's a terrible thing. I'm not, I'm not saying that's not a, something regrettable, but I'm not sure that it exactly makes your case and ties it to proximate parking. And I think in some ways, you, you're, the, the idea that people can't, that you actually have more flexibility in shift work than most agencies do. You have people coming and going at 24/7. Lots of agencies don't, which obviously, then there'd be plenty of parking. I mean, like Mr. May said, you've, I could go on for hours, but combined between the two presentations. But I, I find it really hard to believe that at the, at the end-of-the-line station, because I don't take end-of-the-line, but it's, you know, two, two stations in, and when I come in on the red line, I, it's never standing room. I don't, I don't understand that. And Shady Grove, if I'm not mistaken, is at the end of the line, is it not? And I guess, you know, the, let's spread the blame and look at, and look at Bethesda. The last time around, we heard that same argument. Oh, well, it's the, it's booming downtown Bethesda that's causing the congestion, as though somehow that's a bad thing. And yet, on the one hand, we hear that, and then we hear about everything in terms of economic development that NIH has done for Montgomery County. I mean, pick a lane. It's, it's just disrespectful to talk to us this way, as though you're not, as though NIH employees are somehow so rarified that they cannot accept the limitations of working for the federal government, which is not a free parking space. That's just, and last time we were here, we, we talked about, I actually think your point about the contractors being eligible for TransServe is a very good one. And at the same time, it, it sort of nullifies some of your other arguments, which seem to suggest, well, the, the metro's is saturated. Lots happened in the last five years to change that for good or for bad. That, so, so contractors, you say, should, would benefit from TransServe, and they should get those benefits. I agree. But at, by the same token, you're saying the red line is saturated and eh, you know, 5% to 7% of the congestion is caused by NIH, so you don't have to really do your part. I mean, your, your statements are littered with contradictions and, and reek of entitlement. And I just don't know how you can continuously cite the agreement that you signed and yet not exhibit one iota of movement towards the ratio. You're, you're telling us, this is a room full of planners, that the, that you can't possibly move the needle, and in effect, you don't have a responsibility to because you're special. That's what it, that's what I'm hearing. And it was the same five years ago. And I gather five before that. So, okay, I'm finished. I'm going to be voting no, and I will urge my, I'm urging my fellow commissioners to also vote no. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Tuchel.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I agree with, with many of the sentiments that were expressed. I just want to clarify a few things on the planning side that, that I think we should all, that, that I want to clarify, really for the record more than anything else, but I know red line right now is not at capacity in Northwest DC. I can't speak to it one stop or two stops up, but I am assuming that if in more, the central part of the city is not at capacity, it's also not at capacity at Medical Center. So I just want to, that is, I actually have a memo from Womata because we're looking at putting more density along the red line, and we were interested in these questions. So they are not at capacity now, they have room to grow, and obviously can grow to expand, you know, over time as well. So that is the data I have. I really, I really just, I have to put, I have to clarify that the idea that density in Bethesda is causing traffic is, is, it just goes against everything that we do in planning. It goes against what the TPB has talked about in their Visualized 2045 Plan, which is the idea that you need density at transit exactly so that we don't sprawl and produce more traffic, and that we can hit our climate goals, sustainability goals, so that we can create places that are great. And so I just, I can't let that go because I think that is a misnomer that we hear sometimes in the community, and I think it becomes truth to people, that, that is not in line with any of our plans. The final piece, this kind of reminds me of, is a discussion we had last time about Union Station and just the notion of induced demand. So if it's there, people will use it. And the reason that we have parking ratios that are thoughtful, that are put into the comprehensive plan based on analysis, based on best practices, is because we know it could be one-to-one, it could be 10-to-1. If it's one-to-one, it'll fill up, too. So the idea is, it's that these ratios are based on what we know to be best practices, what we know to be able to achieve multiple goals, not just parking people, but serving various needs, both for you, but for planning, for the community, for the environment. And so I, you know, I've only been on the commission for 15 months. I have yet to see a process, a proposal where we have actually hit the parking ratios, but hopefully one day we will get there. But certainly moving in the wrong direction is not something that I can, I could see supporting.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you know, it seems as though we're having a communication issue. The, what we thought would be a vision for your future that would come in 2018 is now an actual plan for the present. Okay? And so what's missing is the dialogue about that vision for the future. You know, when, when that document was signed, there wasn't a purple line. The purple line is coming, it's one stop away. There are a lot of things changing. You mentioned BRT, I didn't hear that color purple. But we did talk about BRT, and that's also something that hopefully will come. This is all part of a vision, right, that you share in? And so if you could connect those plans, both happening now and future, to your plans so that together, there is a cooperative spirit. We all sincerely applaud the mission of NIH and its role as a good neighbor. And part of that is communication, and we are having a communication problem, I think, right now. Commissioner White.
I so appreciate how you just put that because one of the comments is that we want to understand how the campus will attain the one-to-three goal over the next 20 years. I mean, we're, we're talking about the intentionality of, of attaining a goal, and what, what I heard from you just now was drawing the line in the sand. And so I'm, I'm struggling with that. So I would just want to ask you, does NIH have any intention of pursuing that goal of the one-to-three ratio? I just want to make sure we're hearing it in your words in terms of that question.
We would love to achieve compliance with the three, one-to-three goal. I don't see any tangible signs that Bus Rapid Transit, which I think would, would add immense capacity to the area, it hasn't been funded. You're asking me to make a commitment based upon a program that is unfunded. Put yourself in my shoes. I'm supposed to lobby 20,000 people on a transportation network that is, has defaulted. It is broken, and it isn't owned by NIH. How am I supposed to influence 20,000 people without some proof that there will be solutions to affordable housing, to liable transportation? These are problems that planners across the federal, state, county, and local jurisdictions need to help solve, not solely on the backs of federal employees. This problem is not just related to federal agencies. I think you'd all recognize that. But you're asking NIH to, to play a disproportionate role in solving federal, state, local, county issues while other large employers in Montgomery County are at a one-to-one parking ratio.
I do want to hear those words, purple, come out of your mouth at some point, though. Because I have.
Have you considered charging for parking? It's a, it's a huge incentive.
Yes. I, and, and I will, I think that's a very fair question. Now, as you can appreciate, we're trying to attract and retain world-class scientists, some of whom have, it's no secret, a lot of student debt. The, the housing is not affordable, so the solution is to, is to make them pay for parking. What kind of people you think we're going to be attracting? This is a complicated thing that doesn't just deal with parking ratios, it deals with the ability to attract people.
But, but there are my, I'm, you're looking at one of them. I drive to the metro. Most people, I too, when I, when I was engaging with your representative five years ago, I told him that I was going to move because it was, I was driving, and, and I felt bad about driving to work. And I, I, when I went to look for a house, I'm, I'm, I don't have a trust fund either, so I didn't have an extra 100 grand lying around to get within what, for me, walking distance is a mile and a half of a metro. But I drive. I couldn't afford to live close in either. I also work for the federal government. And so I, you know, it wasn't an original idea. I drive to the, to the subway. I park my car for the day, and then I take the metro into work. A lot of people do it.
Yeah. And I was telling you about our employees who have to drive north to find parking at Shady Grove to then take the red line down to NIH. This happens regularly. I have people who, who live in Kensington and other places to the east, and you're expecting these people to take the red line into the city to, to then take advantage of the, of the metro. This is a complicated problem. Parking ratios alone are not going to solve it. There will be congestion. You cannot have the type of high-density development in Bethesda that's undergoing right now and not have congestion. Even if NIH went to one-to-three, you would have a very difficult commute if you're going to downtown Bethesda. I think you, you would all agree with that. And I encourage you, stand on that corner of 355 and Jones Bridge, look to the south. It is a clogged artery.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner White, would you like to finish? And then Commissioner Argo.
Thank you for your answer. I think we could debate your points one by one.
Sure. That's why it's.
And I think, but I just want to say that I think what I'm disappointed in is the level of conversation instead of seeking solutions, and you're isolating your, your argument on one thing when you talked about Bus Rapid Transit or the failure of the transportation system and the one-to-one parking ratio for businesses. I can't think of a place where that's the case, but, but I, again, I think it's about working together toward a solution, and I do think that federal agencies lead the way in terms of moving toward the. do think that federal agencies lead the way in terms of moving toward these goals of how we focus on transportation, get people around, or look at solutions for how people get to work instead of this sort of blank wall of, we've signed up for this, we're not going to consider anything else. That's what's most disturbing to me.
Well, let me remind you that we reached an agreement in writing to cap our parking and to eliminate approximately 3,000 planned parking spaces. That demonstrates a collaborative spirit. Let's not forget the history here. It's, this, the context of this is what have you done for me lately?
That's actually what I wrote down, actually. But Commissioner Argo, could you, please go ahead.
I just, I just had a couple of things to say. And as a new commissioner and having not been here for what sounded like a really interesting meeting, how many years ago it was? I mean, the presentation that, just a couple of, a couple of comments. No one has brought, no one's brought this up that we probably don't need to, but I was particularly struck by the letter we have from your council member that states that traffic generation is by far the single biggest negative impact that NIH has on our community in Bethesda. So, there's, it may be that, I'll just let that stand the way it is. The other thing that I think is important to, to remind everybody is there may be all kinds of businesses that have their own parking ratios. We don't have any influence over them. So, we're, we're, by definition, we have the ability to impact the issues that we consider hugely important to the continuing development of the National Capital Region, and there's, and you're one of those agencies. We can't do anything about all those people that are putting up high rises in Bethesda, but we can do something about what you're doing. And I think that's, I think that's an important, an important point. I think that's it.
Okay. I'd just like to thank you, and I just would add that I think our, our, one of our other planning agencies in Montgomery County spoke today, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, about, because they do have influence, and they are very active in Bethesda, and we heard, I think, testimony that those parking and, and traffic commute ratios are being strictly planned for and enforced. So, again, I still haven't heard purple, but I'm going to go, Commissioner Dixon.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. You got a tough, a tough battle here, sir. This is not the Navy, but you got a tough battle. I listened to what you, you said, and one thing that troubles me is the focus, and I'm very respectful of the mission, and I'm very aware of it. In fact, I've been engaged with the mission at NIH for almost 13, 15 years very closely. And I'm troubled by the, the discussion that doesn't seem to include much about the district, which is also a potential, maybe help solve some of these problems if folk, I've got some young people in my family who are high-level professionals, and they're looking for housing, and they can't even think about going into Kensington, into the areas near, near NIH. They, they're looking at properties that may be more, or less, less costly in the District of Columbia that will strengthen our base. And, and, and the red line goes that direction also. So, I just, I'm not sure that the, that the, the agency has a, a kind of commitment to the regional development, not just Kensington and Montgomery County, which is, I know where your political juice is at, at the county level and state, but DC is a potential part of the solution too, in terms of maybe offering housing that's maybe more reasonable, and they may, may require them to get red line the other direction. And I also know that there's, there's a lot of, of lack of commitment by, by your agency. Are you all strapped for money in terms of budget tightness? Is that a problem for you all?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know she's been doing a lot of cutting into, into entities that are in the District of Columbia that need to have client base come in and people working too in, in your environment, who, who are transporting themselves on buses and on subways. But I, I just want to make the pitch that DC is still, is also a part of this discussion, not just Montgomery County.
Mr. Cash.
So, I think someone said here earlier, we're all planners, but I'll just caveat like I always do. I'm not a planner, but some of the things that I heard saying about metro just gobsmacked me. I think you had a statistic in yours, in your statement that mentioned 2004, 2014 ridership, which either way is completely kind of insane to bring up at 2019. We are at ridership lows. We've finally stopped the curve going down. We've lost, I mean, metro, we are clamoring for riders, and to say that you're at capacity and you're squished in on a red line train in Bethesda, I mean, try coming to Farragut North sometime, which is the busiest station in the system, and they somehow make it work where there's no parking garages around there. And then to go on, which you mentioned in response to one of these other questions about, well, we don't have anything to do with metro, that's a state and local problem. We need better partnership. The federal government has a quarter of the seats on the metro board. I don't think they use them very often, but they have a quarter of the seats. Unfortunately, the federal government doesn't commit, doesn't stand up to the commitment they made 40 years ago when metro was created to be a partner in working with the federal government and the state and local governments in making this transit system work. So, now we have the district and Maryland and Virginia just pitched in at least $150 million extra each to try and sustain and give a lifeline to metro to keep it going. DC, I think, pays 37% of the share compared to the other jurisdictions to keep this going, and the federal government hasn't stepped up with the commitment that we've all been asking them to throw in another 300 million. So, now we have all this extra money that we're putting in to keep this going, and we have a federal agency who's supposed to be one of our partners that's saying that the metro's too busy up there, our people don't want to ride it, therefore, we're going to let them keep driving to work when they are literally steps away from the metro station. So, to say that, that metro isn't flexible enough, and that's a reason why you shouldn't have to step up because you don't have control, I've just got to say is, is representing one of the, like, the city council who stepped up to put a lot of money in with the mayor's folks and with Maryland and Virginia, and that was a really hard fight, and to hear that you're making the argument that metro is overcapacity and that there's no flexibility and, and you have to rely on state and locals, I just, I find that really jarring and kind of disappointing when we're really trying to, to work together with everyone to get the ridership up, and this is like a prime opportunity to do that, and it's just not happening. And the only other thing I'll say is you keep talking about people having to go north to park then to come in. I would hope that you're actively recruiting maybe people that live south of there. I mean, there's some, for, for NIH doctors, I think there's some very affordable housing along the red line in Brookland and, and all of our northeast stations. So, to make this out as a Kensington and Shady Grove problem because that's the only place where your doctors are allowed to live, I mean, it's, I really find it really tough to believe that that's the only stuff, and we can't be maybe more actively recruiting or encouraging people by getting rid of the parking to get them to find a house in a much more affordable area right off the red line just to the south of Bethesda. So, I just got to say, I really hope that when you're making these presentations or arguments in the future, that you update some of the numbers, and, I mean, it, it's just galling to hear that metro is too busy for people to ride. So, I, not really a question there, I just had to, to put a couple of statements on the record because that, it was incredibly misleading, I felt. Maybe five years ago was a better argument, but today with our ridership levels, I just find it very tough to believe.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Ms. Sullivan.
Yeah, I, thank you. I have to, just to address the record, I wanted to clarify something with regard to Mr. Wieland. You're, you've been talking about the 2015 letter. That letter was written, it was signed by the Executive Director, Marcel Acosta, and it essentially said that staff was anticipating, supporting this notion of a parking cap and that we would also be include, preparing comments for NIH regarding future master plan updates. So, then in 2016, when we did the additional review, the final review, that is what you have already, is that was reflected. So, there, there's not much difference here. The only thing I would say is that the comments that we had alluded to about future master plan updates were codified with, come back in 2018 and, you know, show us how you would get to this long-term one to three ratio. And if I may, I would like to just say one other thing. You know, with these parking ratio goals, we have ways. I mean, when you talk about there's no money for light rail, I mean, our ratios, as you all know with the transportation study and the update to the element that's ongoing right now, you know, we take all of that into account in those ratios, and we also take into account when those things don't go into effect. And there are, you know, we can reassess. There are reasons why maybe you can't meet your ratio, as you know. I mean, there's a few different reasons, but I think one of the problems right now is we don't have any of that information either with regard to, you know, you've talked about teleworking, contracting, all of, you know, I know you have a visitor population, but we don't have anything. We have this parking ratio number, but I, I think that there's an opportunity for us to work together a little bit more if, I mean, again, we are, we, everyone always commits to meeting that goal, and we worked together over, you know, 10, 20 years to try to get there, heading in the right direction. I just wanted to add that.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioner Trueblood. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful. Can I ask a follow-up question, which is, the one to three ratio would be the goal regardless of the light rail, right? Because the metro station's there.
True.
So, that wouldn't, that doesn't necessarily
That is true.
change it. It just, in theory, would make it even easier.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. I know we haven't yet talked about the second part of this conversation. Are we prepared to move into that? Oh, Ms. Ginsburg.
I just want to say from the standpoint that the federal government hasn't stepped up for its obligations toward metro. In fact, we did have a hearing on metro and that there is a bill pending from our committee that would fund metro, both in its infrastructure and for its operations.
Here, here.
Excellent.
Okay. I'd like to open up just to talk a little bit about the, the actual, the buildings in terms of some of the issues associated that have been raised, particularly about the presence of the garage adjacent to the convent. Anybody want to comment on anything there at this point?
Well, I, I would just state the obvious and say, you know, really take a look at your parking situation and forego the garage, charge people for parking. You'd be amazed at how inventive people can, will get. It, it, it's, even when you give a discount, and we've just experienced this, a lot of people in the, at the NCA, at GSA, the National Capital Region, we moved in with our, our head, into our headquarters building, and, and parking down there is 300 bucks a month if you can find it. And you'd be amazed at how many people said, oh, suddenly a trip on metro seems like a pretty good idea. I, I would urge you to consider that. And, and since I'm going to vote against this master plan, I would say it wouldn't, it would be a lot better. It would be a much better plan, and the historic building would, would not need to be, have us worry about it in the slightest, and if there was no garage at all. So, I, I think that the math is remarkably simple if you could just get there. And I just want to say one more thing, even though I shouldn't. I think part of the problem is that in, in every iteration, and I remember this distinctly from five years ago, it was, no. Have you thought of this? No. Have you thought of that? No. Or you, would you try? No. And so, this, and, and now, and now the, the crux of the matter seems, but we have this agreement. The, the agreement doesn't, and, and, and the lack of negotiation seems to be, be mown. But you need to have two people at a table to negotiate, and the staff can't, at NCPC can't negotiate with themselves. And, and so, the deal was, last time, that the 18 re, that the, the, the master plan update in 18, or at least you were coming back, because there was supposed to be a conversation between NIH and the commission. And there hasn't been one. We can't negotiate in any kind of faith, good faith, bad faith, or any faith.
I think Diane and Mike would disagree. We, they're, they are in constant dialogue with David and Susan. We're, we're answering questions routinely, aren't, aren't we, Mike? I mean, we're, we, have we ever stiff-armed you for answers to the question?
They've been very responsive, yes, but, I mean, this would have been better, I think, had you come back with a full update in 2018.
But the, the fact is, the request was made
Right.
in writing, in the executive director's report
That was the expectation, correct.
which was voted on and debated at length. And, and that's where it was left. That part of the conversation was, we'd like to hear from you again in 2018, and now it's 2020.
Well, it, it, it's just the beginning of 2020. We submitted the plan in 2019. It took a year longer than we thought. It's a complex project with, you can imagine trying to get surgeons, radiologists, pathologists together and figure out how you're going to design a half a million square feet. It isn't easy. And so, we, we're a little late. I apologize, but we're transparent. We brought the plan to you in 2019. We're here, and we're talking.
But, but this, but I'm sorry, with all due respect, this, you're, you, you had to be told, hey, leave the design for the garage on the table. You haven't, the, the, it was an update for a plan that was requested. And, and as Mr. Galis put it, you've come back in it with the plan, and, oh, we got the design too. So, so that's not really how the planning process works. The plan precedes the design.
I'm sorry, I mean, you're, you're accusing us of being late on the planning and too fast on the design. I mean, I'm trying to address
No, I'm, I'm not accusing you of anything. I want to be careful with words. I'm not accusing you. What I'm stating is that the, 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 in good faith, it was asked of you to consider after the, in 2015, when we looked at the last no-progress plan, the reason, if it had been a, a, a plan that showed progress or a willingness to move towards the ratio, to, to move towards the goal, then I, I dare say the request for 18 wouldn't even have happened. But it's kind of like, now, I think the feeling on the commission is, you need a checkup from the neck up every couple of years to keep you on task, because we haven't gotten to the point where we've seen any improvement or plans to improve the parking ratio. And now we have a garage. I totally get the, the failing garage. We have one at Sootland, which, by the way, is a campus at the end of another metro line. Very similar issues.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that facility. And I remain committed to working with you, and I've always been responsive, as has my staff, to Mike and, and Diane. I think they would corroborate that. This is a difficult process. It involves a lot of entities, not just NCPC. Montgomery County is an important entity in this. That's where we're hosted. We've heard talk about bus rapid transit, which we have committed to provide land to support that. There's not a single bus rapid transit line available, to my knowledge. So, put yourself in my shoes. I've got to turn around from here and talk to 20,000 scientists with three times my IQ and tell them, trust me, there are solutions in the making, but oh, by the way, they're not funded. I mean, I've got to give her some information to help.
I think we've heard, Mr. Wieland, I think we're going to stop. I think we've heard that we're not asking for a commitment, we're asking for a plan. And the plan uses assumptions. We all, as planners, understand the things, and it was just explained, that sometimes what is planned doesn't happen, okay? But the fact is, we don't have a plan. We're not, there's no, so, if, if you're saying that there's good communication between staff, I would, I would question that, because we were very clear that there needed to be a plan. The EDR has, has recommended that, I hope Commissioner Wright is actually going to vote yes for the EDR, which recommends disapproval of this because of no parking, is a, a very important part of this working together to achieve a goal. This is a regional goal. It's a comprehensive goal. We try to consider your needs, the, the needs of the region, everyone, and, and I think it was explained very well, Commissioner Trueblood talked about the environment, so many other considerations we have on our shoulders as part of this. So, this isn't personal, but what happens is, when, when folks don't communicate as well as they can, then things break down. And what we're looking for, and I hope we've been able to impress it upon you today, we're looking for a dialogue, a communication, a vision, and resources of this commission staff can help you achieve that vision, we think. That's what I think I heard, I, it be said. So, all is not lost, but there has to be a commitment to communicate. I feel the same about what we're staring at here. I feel like the Maryland Historic Trust is a player. They're going to be a player. You cannot look past them, no matter what you would like to do. player. You cannot look past them, no matter what you would like to do. So the resources that maybe you haven't been able to devote to planning because you're busy designing buildings, and I know it takes a lot, I, I sympathize with your task. I really, really do. But, again, the way to, the pathway to success, and we want NIH to be the star of the world in what we do in this country, and we're so proud of that mission. So let us help you. And let's find a way to communicate better in this process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Sorry, just one quick question. I don't know if this, if staff would know this off the top of their head or D O D, but my recollection is there's another very big medical facility very close to this metro, maybe just across the street, that has a lot of doctors, but I guess the difference is they have to follow the orders of D O D, and maybe that causes less parking. But is, is Walter Reed in compliance or closer to compliance with their parking ratio?
Their master plan is in compliance with the one-to-three ratio.
And they have a lot of really smart doctors and all that stuff, but it sounds like maybe the difference is, they can be told, you're not going to park, and they're a little bit better at following orders. But I'm, as far as how special this group of people is, I mean, it might work if you didn't have Walter Reed right across the street. I mean, we had, we had some of these arguments about, down at, uh, Sootland, about, oh, well, I mean, these are special people that are coming in from very far away. We've had D O D conversations about this, and, I mean, there's a lot of special people, I guess, working for the feds, but I mean, they're right next to the metro on the other side of the street. So I, I think that, that a lot of this, we're getting nitpicky here, but I'm just going back to 30,000 feet up, and, I mean, it's, it's, I just don't think it's defensible.
Okay, Mr. White.
I just want to call attention to page three of the recommendation, and it stated very clearly advises the applicant that the commission will not formally review the parking garage until NIH develops a detailed plan to reduce employee parking with an immediate short-term reduction, as well as clear milestones and strategies for attaining the one-to-three goal over the next 20 years. And then there are four specific strategies that could be included. So I would ask you to take that in the spirit of cooperation. And if you have transportation planners on your master planning team, I would ask them to take this. There are some transportation planners out there who are very creative in looking at solutions beyond parking that could work for you. So I implore you to, to do what this says. And our commission, I would agree, we should not be formally reviewing this garage or having this discussion now until we have that detailed plan. That's what, that's what I think the, the important message is from this recommendation from staff.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the clarity behind it.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yeah, I just had another question. So, and I'm, and I'm glad that Commissioner White, you know, entered into this discussion about the professional advice you can get. I mean, do you actually have a transportation demand management plan right now? Transportation demand management?
We have a transportation demand management program, and.
And is that internally managed? Do you have consultants who are helping you with that?
I'm not the subject matter expert in that, but we can provide that information.
Right. Okay, so I, I mean, I think that's one of the real gaps here, because the, the reactions we are getting from you about what the alternatives would be to everyone driving their own car are things like, well, the B R T doesn't exist yet, and the metro is too crowded, et cetera. But, you know, one of the other statistics that you cited me is that you have 167 people who carpool? Was that, did I hear that correctly?
There are 107, 167 carpool organizations, if you will, so there might be.
Organizations, okay. Because, I mean, that was a shockingly low number, if it was the actual number of people.
Yeah.
But, you know, carpooling is like the age-old way of reducing parking demand.
Sure.
And, you know, even things as basic as that can be, should be promoted, and there are ways that the agencies across the federal spectrum, you know, make use of these various tools to promote people not parking, not driving. And I'm, we're not seeing evidence of this, maybe there's more of it that we just don't see, but that's where the relief is. It's not in claiming that you should somehow be an exception.
I, I just want to restate the fact that parking is a measure, but it's not the entire measure of the impact of an agency on congestion. We have scientists that work into the wee hours in the evening because of the nature of their studies. They commute off-peak. If the, if the focus here is on sort of only looking at the parking ratio, my understanding is that the parking ratio is really focused on alleviating congestion. A M and P M peaks, peak travel, entering and exiting the gates, are really a more appropriate measure of effectiveness, are they not? Is the focus here just on parking, or is it on congestion?
I think the focus is on a plan that we don't have. I'm serious. Please, let's not keep going back over this. I mean, if you have those consi, conditions, express them in your plan. That's what we're looking for. We need to understand how all those dynamics work in your organization. It's called a plan, and we're looking for one, and how it's going to move your organization in the direction that this entire region is committed to achieving. Okay? Any last comments? Commissioner McMahon?
I've been, I've been hesitant in talking, but I guess we'll now, having been through, lived through BRAC 133 many years ago. But I think what's missing, and we haven't talked about, is, is an up, ma, master plan update, is I think one of the key issues there isn't a traffic demand management plan, but it's what that falls into, which is a transportation management plan, which will get a lot of the issues that we're talking about. It'll get to Mr. Whelan's comment about, hey, I'm not affecting A M P M traffic without an up-to-date transportation management plan with that study and that detailed research. You know, this, I mean, we really have much to go on, and I've got to support the rest of the members of the commission telling you that I think we'll accept Mr. Acosta's E D R's recommendation to, to go back and take a look at this piece of your proposal at least, and come back to us.
Sure. Cash?
Sorry, I won't talk about minimums, but I will ask a process question. So, I mean, there, so going to your point, there is a provision in the E D R that says that we're not taking a position on the parking facilities here. We're, if we approve this, we're essentially talking about the small addition and the vault. Is that my understanding? Am I understanding that correctly? That, that if we were to approve the E D R, we are saying in there that we're not taking a position on the parking, but that means that we are tacitly taking a position on the vault and the addition?
We, basically, as part of our comments, we said that, that based on their submission information, we're comfortable with the location of the vault, and that it's not going to violate the existing height restriction, and it's going to kind of bump the building out closer to the street. So we're, we're basically providing some comments on the, on the, the proposed addition.
So where, I'm then struggling is between Mr. Gallis and other commissioners, it seems that there's a, so you're saying, why don't we just approve it because it advises that we're not taking a position on the parking? But if we approve it, I feel like we're kind of letting them off the hook because they've got their vault, which is part of the garage, let's be clear. We're not talking about two separate buildings. So that's kind of where I'm struggling here, is that, and I don't know if we'll have some discussion over if, if that seems to be in the air, that, that we're talking about approving or not approving, and what the effect of that is. Because I feel like if we approve the E D R, and we're just saying that we're punting on the parking, and you essentially, we want you to get back to us on something better, we're giving you the other really important part, and I, I want to say necessarily leverage, but because they are really the same facility, I'm just wondering that if we, as a commission, if we should entertain approving the whole thing, or if that lets them off the hook.
I mean, I want to know that, too, because I think, I guess, I'm, I'm ready to say no, because we have, are, the, the last two E D Rs, I think, in 15 and 13, right? We depend on, on comity between federal agencies, and I don't feel the presence of that in this relationship. So I'm not sure why we're going to gently set adrift another set of lovely comments that say, gee, we'd really appreciate it if you do this, we really mean it. It feels, it feels like, and, and I can imagine a situation where people at my level in a huge organization like NIH, doing, trying to do your job, might be able to use a strong message from the commission. Because if you'll recall, those of us who were here five years ago, and I forget the gentleman's name from NIH, but he kept saying, upper management, upper management, they're going to go nuts, they're going to go crazy, they won't even think about this. Perhaps it's time for the commission to send a message that will assist at a staff level to get upper management's attention, that this kind of shenanigans has to come to a stop, and they have to get serious about making a contribution alongside everyone else.
Let me, let me just state that the NIH Deputy Director for Management, Colleen Barrows, signed the agreement that eliminated 3,000 parking spaces and capped the NIH parking at 9,000 spaces. We thought we had an agreement. We are remaining faithful to that cap. That was in lieu of the parking ratio. That was an agreement signed in writing. We are remaining faithful to it, and it sounds like the commission is unwilling to.
In lieu of?
Yes.
Is that, is that legit?
That's what we agreed to. It was, it was then mischaracterized by the report by the commission, but we agreed to capping the 9,000 in lieu of the one-to-three ratio.
Well, I've never heard of that. Do we do that?
So, there was a temporary, so this, the issue is, is you, I think NIH believes that the interim parking ratio that the commission agreed to in 2016 was.
Till 18.
Yet, to 18. They saw that as a permanent, forever grandfathered-in cap.
I see.
And the commission asked for them to come back in 2018 with a plan to then show us how they were going to get to the one-to-three ratio.
And that's actually reflected in the transcripts and the old video of that meeting, where, where we talk about an interim measure. They're going to be back in 2018. So that is on the record.
I acknowledge that the, the commission requested that, and we delivered documents to you in 2019. And I apologize for being about a year late. The complexities of these projects caused us a delay of about a year. And that, in the planning realm, a delay of a year is not unreasonable. I think you'd all agree with, with that. It was unintentional, but these are complex projects.
No, I think that this is not a plan. This is a design.
Yeah.
So, right, there's a difference, and let's not, let's just agree to disagree now, okay? I'm going to stop that part of this discussion. There's been some observation about how we want to treat the vault and the parking versus the building. Commissioner Trueblood, did you have something you want?
Well, I, I just want to maybe put a point on that, which is, if there's confusion, I don't want another E D R that might sew more, I'm worried that this E D R, which does attempt to, 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 to find a middle ground, might actually be even more confusing. So I don't, I mean, I, I'd love thoughts on, on, on where, on, on that, because.
Mr. White?
I have a suggestion. I think you've just put your finger on what the basic problem is here, is our interpretation was interim, you're interpreting it as permanent. So I wonder if it wouldn't help to defer any decision on this until our general councils get together and come to agreement on what that means, so we can move forward. Maybe that's too radical a step, but I, I'm hearing one interpretation is interim, and you're saying you view it as permanent. And that seems to me the roadblock here, as to why you've not submitted plans because you felt you didn't have to. So to, to me, it's really fundamental, and I appreciate Commissioner Cash bringing up, I was just focused on trying to get us past the plan idea on transportation, but the vault is important. So, that, that would be my suggestion. I don't know if that's worthwhile, but.
Commissioner May, or, Commissioner Cash, and then Commissioner May.
Well, I'd just like to build on that, because I think we did that for a project a few months ago. I think, that wasn't Walter Reed after I just said such nice things about them, and was, the project with the side of the building, and we deferred action, and we were hoping to get a better plan back, was that?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, there was a situation where we were kind of pushing back to hopefully get a better result, and I'm expecting, I got to have the sense that we're hoping to get a better result from that. So, I mean, I don't think that deferring action, or even voting no here, just kind of send that message, might not be the best way forward. I mean, and I can just hear now that one of the things, if we only approve the vault, and then you're not going to let us build the garage, then we have a sequencing problem, it's going to be inefficient, and everything's going to fall apart. We, that happened at St. Elizabeth due to funding issues, and I mean, sometimes you might have to, to be really, to, to move things forward in, in not the, the greatest way, but if we can't come to agreement on the parking, then I don't really feel comfortable voting on something that tacitly touches on the parking, because either we'll come back and say, well, then we, we're under the assumption we're still under the old 2016 agreement.
Right.
Unless I have an E D R that's only saying, yeah, this vault looks okay, I just feel like we run the risk of, of some shenanigans, or some value engineering arguments that suddenly say, okay, we now have to build this vault, but this was all part of it, so we're just going to build the shell and not let anyone park there, so it's not a parking garage until we say it is. I mean, I'm just wondering what kind of machinations could happen if we pass something that requested the garage, and that we punt on the garage. So, I'm, I'm kind of talking myself into saying either outright deferral, if, if we can do that, or just saying no, and hoping that we come back with maybe one or the other project.
Yeah. Isn't that the St. Elizabeth solution, building the garage, and they're not calling it that?
You got it. The, no, I, I was just, I was coming to the same conclusion, that we could, we can't really vote on this, because I think that we, there's a lot of very useful information that's in this report that should be adopted, but I think that without sending a very strong message on parking, I, I, I agree, it's very hard to, you know, we've had these, this very strong conversation, and then we're just going to say, well, we advise that we're not going to consider it any further until, you know, you come up with a plan. I mean, I, I also appreciate the fact that we're getting to the crux of the, of the dispute here, which is the belief that the 9,000 was, you know, was permanent. And I, I don't believe I ever considered it to be a permanent thing, and this is where flexibility comes into play, right? I mean, that was an interim measure designed to get us past that moment, and give NIH the flexibility to come up with a plan that eventually meets the one-to-three ratio. And that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any permanent parking plans anywhere in this region. But could I, maybe, Mr. Commissioner May, you, you raised something earlier that might be a scenario also to consider, that you suggested that there be no parking, new parking garage, right? So if, if we took that notion, and we also connect with Commissioner Cash and his concern about the vault and the parking, we could approve the first portion of the C D R, which addresses the surgery, radiology, laboratory, medicine addition, and stop. What do you think?
I would just say, I would then wonder if we just approved the vault, if NIH wouldn't come back and say, well, if we're just getting a vault, this is not how we would design it, this is not where we would put it, it's not compatible.
We wouldn't approve the vault.
So you're saying.
That's it, the vault is separate. Vault is a separate part of the E D R.
So which.
Let's call up the E D R. So the first part deals with the surgery, radiology, laboratory, medicine addition.
And that, yeah, the small addition, yeah.
And that's, it's seven, it's 520,000 square feet, okay? And then, we could stop. We don't, we could, we could delete the rest of the E D R related to parking, relating to garage, utility, vault design, and location.
I mean, I still wonder, though, if we're not running the same problem, that we're not, we don't have, we don't have any way to hold feet to the fire. I mean, sure, I, they, they need this extra space, but considering they came and had a submission with three different parts, it almost seems like the, whatever, whatever the strategy behind that was, might have been, I mean, okay, we'll, we'll have this one great little thing that you can all agree on, then to just disapprove the other parts, and then we, as a commissioner, are only approving one-third of what, I, it seems like we're really starting to chop this down, if we're going to take one small part of, of the overall, I mean, and I have as much experience as a lot of the other commissioners.
I don't think it's that small. I mean, this is a building that is significant to the mission of, of NIH. And I'm not really trying to be an advocate, but I am trying to say, these are two different issues. And I think Commissioner May raised this when he said, really, you don't need parking to build this building. And so, that is really the question. And if you want to come back and convince us that you need parking to build this building, and you need a vault to support it, come back with a design that's going to meet with the Maryland Historic Trust, that's going to demonstrate a plan for parking.
Well, and it's, we really are talking about plan here, right? This is just master planning anyway.
That's right.
So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm torn. I could go either way on this, whether we slice off all of that and defer. I mean, the one good thing about keeping it all together is that it is a greater incentive for M H, NIH to come back to us with what we need.
Is it worth us hearing from NIH what their reaction would be to approving only that one slice of it? Because I kind of suspect that maybe they wouldn't be, they would just say, well, forget it, we'll come back. So, I mean, if we were to just delete everything out of the E D R except for the addition, like the actual medical space, would you all be like, that's great, we got at least a third of it? Or would you say? of it? Or would you say, we'd rather go back and come up with something different? I mean, is there any utility in us trying to sever this anymore?
I don't think there's... I think it's going to be highly inefficient to reprogram and plan and design this facility. I would prefer that the Commission take a harder look at other parking garages that are futuristic and disapprove them, which were approved in the 2013 plan, and allow us to proceed with this.
Well, what do you mean by this? This is in the medical addition or this in the vault or this in the garage or... So, if we took the position that we're going to delete everything except for with regard to the surgical space, would that be great with you? That you'd say, walk away, okay, we at least got this one part of the plan that we need to get done now? Or is it just not worth us even approving that if you had your druthers? If we were silent on the garage and the vault?
The utility vault is critical because the electrical equipment is housed in legacy facilities referred to as 5959A. I think we showed Mike those facilities. That's decrepit infrastructure that serves the existing hospital and this vault would serve the new addition and the existing hospital. We can't even find parts for the electrical equipment. And so, it's a dire need. If the focus here is on reducing parking, you had previously approved parking garages in the South 40. Why can't we proceed with this and it's neutral? Every space that's added is... We have a removal on a one-to-one basis, which we think is consistent with our agreement to have capped parking.
I think that that simply requires the plan to communicate that. That would... That's exactly... That would be a beautiful thing, wouldn't it? But we haven't been given that plan and that's what we need. That's what we're asking for.
So, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, because we're kind of in a vicious circle? A vicious circle? I don't know. First of all, to be clear, we're obviously adopting comments on the draft master, but each of these things will come back as projects in the future, which is where you would actually approve that building or approve the vault and/or a parking garage on top of it. This is to kind of lay out the basic elements of it. What you've just said was kind of what we were suggesting here, which is the problem is you may want to keep this garage, but you have to remove something else to get to 800 spaces. You actually... That's kind of what the master plan should do, as well as a transportation demand management plan, which would outline all these other factors. So, I would say, using your comment, perhaps we could go back and have a conversation about how to accomplish what we had asked the Commission to adopt, which is to advise you that we're not going to adopt any future projects until you consider those four things that are outlined here as a... As a possible trade-off to doing this garage. If you feel this garage is so important to your operations, something else, there's an unbuilt garage nearby that's in the out-years of your plan that you may have to take off in order to get to the numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's kind of looking at those pieces and then trying to figure out what we would do over the next 10, 20 years. So, if we could do that, I think that essentially would meet the Commission's request. Perhaps what I would suggest is we may defer this by one month and let's talk because I think there's some clarity here now in terms of what you may be willing to consider in order to perhaps get this particular facility, which I believe is a priority for you, to kind of move that forward. So, it's really looking at your out-year projects and asking the question, do you really need this vis-à-vis this garage that you're proposing? And then how do you get down to... How do you reduce it by overall parking by 800 spaces over a 20-year horizon, right? So, if we could solve that, then I think the Commission may be more amenable to hearing a discussion. But I think what you've just said actually is what we'd like you to do with this recommendation. So, if you're woeing, I think we could work with you over the next month and then perhaps bring this back with revised language that perhaps the Commission might find acceptable as well as your organization. All right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner White.
So, I just want to make sure I understood. So, the suggestion would be to defer action on this entirely, right? Because I personally would want to piecemeal it out. Okay.
Yeah, defer. And then we'll come back with either a progress report or a revised EDR. That would be clear based also, maybe we would remove some of the comments that we have or just to make it cleaner. So, either way, we'll bring something back to you. If we're not able to make progress, we'll also let you know.
I'd also just like to emphasize, you know, the outreach to the Maryland Historic Trust, it's in the EDR. We are recommending that. We're not going to vote on it today, but we'd like to hear from that, about that, when you come back as well. Commissioner Trueblood.
So, just a question on that because we've talked a lot about what we're trying to achieve and see. It seems to me we talked a lot about a TDM something, rather. I don't know if that can happen in a month. So, I just... I don't want to... I'd hate for you to come back and we still not see the kind of large-scale understanding, analysis, plan that we've, I think, batted around.
I agree that may be the outcome of this because obviously it takes a while to get a transportation development management plan, demand management plan in place. But I think we could at least write the EDR in a cleaner way to express kind of your concerns, but also allow them to give them some guidance in terms of exactly what we would be looking for prior to a submission of a project, which is really kind of what, you know, you would have to approve or deny, you know, whenever that comes in. They've already, you know... To be honest, I mean, they originally wanted to submit a project to you. And so, we asked them to convert it back into a master plan amendment so at least we could have the parking garage looked at in the context of other parking that they have to... They may want to construct over time and how that would affect the overall numbers. So, we asked for this to be converted back to a master plan amendment. So, in order to at least allow that conversation to occur prior to a project being submitted. So, you know, so I think that's kind of where we're at right now. But we... I think we just need to kind of either clean up the language or at least get a better understanding of what they would like to do and kind of whether we could accept that or not. So, I think that's what we'll work on over the next month.
Commissioner White.
So, to Commissioner Trueblood's point, is your concern that we'll still be looking at this in the absence of a transportation demand plan, which I don't know that could be done in 30 days. But could we outline or get a commitment to do one and milestones? You know, I mean, I think that's what you're trying to get at, is what would the expectation be in commitment to creating one? I guess would give me...
That could be an important issue if they feel that they can't meet 1 to 3. But perhaps they would say, today, we're willing to give up this parking garage in the future to get this one, and they would get to 1 to 3 or a couple of other lots. So, it's really... So, they need to make a decision whether that's going to be acceptable to them in order to get to this... To get this garage constructed and then the master plan would be amended to eliminate those other garages from their plans or not. I mean, that's kind of what I need to understand from them. It is pretty difficult to have that conversation in the entire room. But I think that's really kind of the core question that needs to be answered today. And if they say, we can't do that, then I think it's really a matter of you would need to justify why you can't reach it and that's why you would need a transportation demand management plan.
Okay. So, Commissioner Cash.
Just to build on Director Acosta's comments there, it sounds like what I'm hearing, too, is that you're saying, okay, if we build this garage, we might not need one of these other garages for a while longer. But if we're talking about this in the context of a master plan, if that's the case, if you really want this garage when you come back to us whenever, it might be worth, as long as you're going through and amending this, to think about, oh, as long as we're talking about this new one, here's what we would take off the table. I mean, I think that's what could give us some more clarity. If we had these couple of red dots and then you put an X over one of the others, I think that you'd have a lot easier time getting this garage that you really want if you show a solid plan to at least eliminate some of the rest of it. And I mean, the transportation plans and all this stuff need to happen, I think, for long-term. But if you really need this garage where this one is at, I think you need to be able to come back with a concession and as part of that amendment, say that we're nixing this one. And then the next time you come for a cycle in 10 years, add it back in at that point. But I think that would probably speed up this debate a lot more if we were committing to...
Would you actually amend their plan to remove the displaced parking garage? Like if they're swapping one out, you want to see it in the amendment?
Right. Yeah, because otherwise, we're just going to be adding the spaces, which gives you the eventual capacity for it, which I think is part of the worry here, that if we're putting another garage onto the plan, even if those other ones aren't being built, it allows for this capacity because we've... This Commission's already said, yeah, we think it's a great place for a parking garage here. So, I think if you were to come back and show us, if you really want this garage because of its proximity to the right buildings and to everything, show us the one that you're willing to give up. And I think that just gives us more assurance that you're not going to bleed over the cap because otherwise, we're putting up... We're approving something that ups the overall number of parking spaces. That could happen whether or not we're approving the individual project. So, I think that could just make things go a little more smoothly when you come back to us and maybe you should be part of the mixes, you continue to work with staff.
Not to be difficult, but could you show... Go to the convent photograph, one and two, I think it was? Here we go.
If you must build it, don't build it there.
So, my other thing I'd just like to advise is that, you know, this is, I think, a very nice number-one photo. Please remember this one. And is there a way to maybe build less parking here? Okay, take a floor off? What that would do would have a huge impact on this view corridor that we're talking about. So, those are the kinds of give and takes that we would like thoughtful consideration to as part of your coming back.
Can I add to that, too?
Certainly.
Can you go back to the site map, please? If you do determine that you need a garage, I would... I know that... I'm assuming that there was a stand of trees, but I don't know. Along this, what I believe, is this a north-south picture?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that you're... It doesn't really matter too much what the height is going to be. You're going to be giving the convent a case of the vapors because you're too close to it. And I would look at giving it some room and putting it along the east-west entrance road on an east-west axis and give the convent some breathing room. Just a thought. I don't think you should build it at all, but I think it's in a really awful place for the historic building. And I suspect that the Maryland Trust, through a 106 consultation process, you're going to find that out.
I appreciate that feedback and we looked at that. We want to make sure that as we induct vehicles into campus, we don't queue out on the old Georgetown Road. And there are a lot of utilities there that we've exhaustively looked at. The other thing is, I want to make sure it's clear, it's not an active convent. We purchased it years ago. There are no nuns in it.
It's a classroom building, isn't it? Or students use it?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have meetings in there. Medical scholars reside in that facility. These physician scientists work in the clinical center. And so, the view shed is important, but the safety and security of our people are important. And we're, like all of you, we harmonize a wide array of factors and this is not easy. We have a lot of historic facilities on our campus that we inherited. We try to...
Right. So, I'm just simply saying, it's not... Whether it was a bunch of nuns in there or not wasn't my point. My point is that there are humans in there and it's a historic building. And even though it's not listed on the register, it is eligible, which gives us the same rights and privileges that we afford to buildings that are on the register. And I suspect through a consultation process that you will hear from your consulting parties that the building as planned is too close to the convent. I'm simply saying.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to defer the CDR.
So, move.
Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Whelan. We do appreciate your thoughtful presentation today and hopefully you had both ears open and I'm sure you'll be re-listening to the recording of this and advising your leadership as well. So, thank you. We look forward to seeing you again. Thank you very much. So, the Smithsonian's been very patient, right? We love having you back. Next is Agenda Item 6B. To approve comments on the draft master plan for the Sutland Collection Center. Ms. Herr will give our presentation today.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. The Smithsonian Institution has submitted a draft master plan for the Sutland Collection Center located at 4210 Silver Hill Road in Sutland, Maryland. The draft master plan includes the addition of over 1.5 million square feet of space in new facility additions to accommodate the Smithsonian's long-term collection storage needs. At this time, the applicant is seeking general planning comments on the draft master plan from the Commission. So, as this is a draft master plan review, the Commission is providing feedback on compliance with the comprehensive plan, understanding the proposed goals and objectives, and identifying planning issues such as parking, circulation, access, and security to be addressed prior to the next review. To reiterate, the Commission is not being asked to approve a project design at this time. The Smithsonian Collection Center, also known as the SCC, occupies 110 acres in Prince George's County. The SCC is bounded by Silver Hill Road, Maryland 458 to the south, Sutland Parkway, Maryland 337 to the northeast, and Old Silver Hill Road and residential neighborhoods to the west. The Sutland Metro Station is approximately 1,900 feet to the east on the other side of Sutland Parkway. The site is bounded by historic properties to the east, including Sutland Parkway and the Sutland Federal Center Historic District. Surrounding land uses include single-family and multifamily residential to the south and northwest, commercial uses to the south and west, and federal uses to the east across Sutland Parkway. The SCC is comprised of a total of 1.3 million square feet in multiple facilities. The Smithsonian has utilized the site for collection storage since the 1950s, when the original Garber Collections Buildings pictured here were constructed. All of these buildings will eventually be removed over the 40-year master plan timeframe. The Smithsonian added the Museum Support Center in 1983 in a pod format for ease of expansion and internal space organization. A central corridor divides the administrative space from the collection space. This feature will be repeated in the future master plan development that I will cover later. An additional pod six is planned for this building at its western end. The Smithsonian Gardens Greenhouse was approved by the Commission in 2008 and it will remain. The National Museum of the American Indian Cultural Resource Center at the eastern end of the site was approved in 1994 and will also remain. And the Fleet Management Building was approved by the Commission in 2009 and will remain. The Botany Greenhouse and Osteo Prep Labs pictured here will be relocated to accommodate the new master plan development. The eastern entrance to the site is shown in the draft master plan as 4/10 of a mile from the Sutland Metro Station, or just over 2,000 feet, and walking distances to the western portion of the site are shown as over a mile. While the site is within walking distance to the Sutland Metro Station, the physical route on Silver Hill Road is potentially dangerous and includes crossing three slip lanes and a driveway with no crosswalk, as seen here in the images of the route as you head towards the SCC from the metro station. Proposed improvements to this route will be discussed in a later slide. The campus is closest to Sutland Metro Station, as mentioned, with service on the Green Line. Several metro and local bus routes run in the immediate vicinity of the site, as shown here. The Smithsonian also runs a shuttle service from the SSE, SCC, to the National Mall facilities for employees. As you can see, the shuttle can take significantly less time than using metro. Existing access to the site is from three secure entrances, two on Silver Hill Road and one on Old Silver Hill Road. Parking on-site is spread over several parking lots and along some internal access drives. The site currently has 391 parking spaces for employees and visitors. The draft master plan states the current parking ratio is 1 to 1.2, with getting a goal of getting to 1 to 2. The SCC is heavily wooded with a mix of deciduous evergreen trees on the northwest and portions of the south along Silver Hill Road, creating a dense buffer from adjacent land uses. There are also steep slopes leading to the site from Sutland Parkway. This is a view of the site from Sutland Parkway, where the woodlands and slopes are clearly visible. Additional views from Sutland Parkway of the site. This is a view of the two site entrances on Silver Hill Road for the National Museum This is a view of the two site entrances on Silver Hill Road for the National Museum of the American Indian Cultural Resources Center on the left and the Museum Support Center on the right. The view on the left is from Old Silver Hill Road at the existing entrance to the Garber Buildings. The view on the right is from a residential area to the northwest of the site. The approved 1993 master plan had much more scope, with a planned total of 3 million square feet of space in buildings up to eight stories tall. Per the draft master plan, the 1993 plan was ambitious and envisioned programmatic strategies that were not realized. Now, I will highlight the proposed draft master plan elements. As you can see, the master plan, we will go over the purpose and goals, proposed development, access, the interim 20-year development plan, parking, pedestrian accessibility, and security changes. Currently, the Smithsonian has more than 155 million objects and specimens, 163,200 cubic feet of archives, and 2.2 million library volumes that include irreplaceable national icons, examples of everyday life, and scientific material vital to the study of the world's natural and cultural heritage, covering subjects from art to zoology. These are housed in more than 2.1 million square feet of collection space. The SCC is one of the primary off-site facilities for collection-storage. However, many of its facilities need replacement or renewal. In addition to improving the quantity and quality of their collections, storage, the Smithsonian also plans to improve collections' access, environmental stewardship, and circulation. The Smithsonian anticipates that when fully developed over the 40-year timeframe, the SCC campus will house approximately 2.4 million gross square feet of facilities and have a total population of 550 employees and 360 rotating staff and visiting researchers. The SCC will be able to accommodate 40% of Smithsonian's total collection storage. This is an illustrative image of the proposed master plan build-out. I will now highlight some of the key master plan components. The site will retain just over 9,000 square feet of the existing 1.3 million. The buildings to remain are noted with a teal star and include the Museum Support Center, the Fleet Management Building, Smithsonian Gardens Greenhouse, and the National Museum of the American Indian Cultural Resource Center. The new facility is total over 1.5 million square feet and are indicated with an orange star, the largest of which is the new collection-storage complex. Most new construction will be on this new development northwest of the MSC. The new collection-storage building will be built in a similar pod format to the MSC. Also, will have a central corridor that separates administrative space from the collection space. The new building will curve around a central quad with gathering spaces and amenities for employees. The remaining facilities are either planned additions or relocations of existing facilities, including Pod 6, the Botany Greenhouse, and the Osteo Prep Lab. Here is a more detailed plan of the proposed master plan development that highlights access and circulation across the campus. As previously noted, the dark gray buildings are existing and will remain. The new plan includes the consolidation of site access to one primary vehicular access at the intersection with Old Silver Hill Road and a pedestrian and emergency vehicle-only access at the eastern end of the site on Silver Hill Road. There is improved internal vehicular and pedestrian circulation as well. The new primary vehicular access will include improved security, a visitor center, and intersection improvements for Silver Hill and Old Silver Hill Roads. Included here are views of the campus after the full 40-year build-out. The first view is from Sutland Parkway. The second one is at the new consolidated vehicle entrance. This slide shows the comparative views of the existing building versus the proposed buildings as viewed from the adjacent residential neighborhood. The height and scale of the buildings will increase, but existing vegetation generally screens these changes. The full build-out of the master plan is anticipated to take 40 years, but the draft master plan also includes progress at the 20-year increment. As you can see, two pods of the new development replace the northern portion of the Garber Buildings. Additional development changes include the addition of Pod 6 to the MSC and the relocation of the Botany Greenhouse and the Osteo Prep Lab. The vehicular entrance consolidation has also occurred along with the pedestrian improvements on Silver Hill Road. The 20-year timeframe also includes parking changes. The proposed development includes newer expanded parking with a goal to achieve a parking ratio of 1 to 2. While the proposal will decrease the overall parking total, it does not meet the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the site is within 2,000 feet of the Sutland Metro Station and must meet the 1 to 3 parking ratio. We recognize, however, that the route for pedestrians to and from the metro station is potentially dangerous. And therefore, staff recommends that the commission request the Smithsonian develop a detailed plan to reduce employee parking with clear milestones and strategies for attaining the 1 to 3 goal over the next 20 years. The commission will assess the need for deviation from the targets on a project-by-project basis, recognizing a near-term reduction may not be possible, given the current infrastructure The master plan and transportation management plan recognize the need for a multi-use bicycle and pedestrian path on the north side of Silver Hill Road and the need for these improvements connecting all the way to the Sutland Metro Station. These improvements are supported by Prince George's County, inconsistent with the local Sutland Silver, Silver Hill Greenway, in the 2014 Southern Green Line Station Area Sector Plan, as noted in the upper-left image. The Smithsonian has committed to building the bicycle and pedestrian improvements on the portion of Silver Hill Road under their jurisdiction, as rendered in the bottom picture, but the master plan does not indicate a specific timeframe. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission requests Smithsonian submit timing information on the bicycle and pedestrian improvements for the portion of Silver Hill Road that is within their jurisdiction. The additional improvements needed to access the metro station will require coordination with the National Park Service and the Maryland State Highway Administration, who own the remaining land. The most unsafe portion of the route are crossing the slip lanes from Sutland Parkway. The Smithsonian has agreed to convene a meeting with MPS, Maryland State Highway Administration and GSA, on the proposed improvements. The draft master plan indicates that the site has issues with crime and proposes some security upgrades. The first security upgrade is a new fence with jeep-trail, security cameras, lighting, and a cleared path through the woods to the north of the buildings. This type of fence proposal is similar to other federal campus projects the commission has approved, including the James J. Rowley Training Center. Staff also acknowledges that the proposed clear zone does represent a reduction in width from 50 feet to 25 feet, based on consultation discussions. However, it is unclear from the current submission whether the campus security issues warrant the potentially negative impact to the environment. The other proposed upgrade is the replacement of the existing 10-foot chain link and barbed wire and decorative metal fence on Silver Hill Road with a continuous 10-foot decorative metal fence. The majority of other recent federal secure campuses have 8-foot perimeter fences, including the DHS Nebraska Avenue Center, Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall, Fort Belvoir, and the National Zoo. It is unclear from the current submission whether the campus security issues warrant the proposed interventions, and staff recommends that the commission, sorry. Staff recommends the commission request the Smithsonian submit a security threat analysis with the next submission to address the need for the clearance area and lighting for the woodland fence and the 10-foot fence on Silver Hill Road. Staff further recommends that the commission request the Smithsonian submit additional information regarding tree and vegetation removal and the proposed lighting in the 25-foot clearance zone, if the clearance zone and 10-foot fence on Silver Hill Road are warranted. The commission should submit, or the Smithsonian should submit, a robust landscape plan to mitigate for any loss of contiguous habitat in the wooded area and the impacts of nighttime lighting, and to improve the streetscape aesthetic along Silver Hill Road. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions. Representatives from the Smithsonian are available to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Herr. Appreciate the informative presentation. Are there questions, comments? Commissioner May.
I just have a question. I tried to look at this before I came in, but I don't really know exactly what land is parkland that's in question here. Is that just the stretch, just to the, to the right?
We go back to the beginning, because I think that would be more helpful. So, just to the right of the site on Silver Hill Road, I believe, belongs to MPS, and then the Parkway itself.
Right, yeah, Parkway, I'm familiar with it, just the, I didn't know where, how far our property extended. So, it's that sort of wedge-shaped thing under the arrow there?
Yeah.
Salt town on there? Pictures I saw, like the salt town maintenance facility.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Wright.
I'm forgetting, because I kind of, I think the other one dipped me in. So, so, you talk about-
Stay strong. Stay strong.
Don't worry, it's just a question. So, they, you said in the EDR about you get, I have to confess that I'm a little confused by this map. So, the metro is, is, can you put the cursor on the metro station on that map? Is that, yeah, I know it's 14 in this map, but I can't figure it out in the other map.
Hold it, which map?
This one.
Sort of, just below the green line.
Yeah. That's what, okay.
Oh, you can't see my cursor, sorry.
Okay, so, I mean, the reason I want to know where it is, is because I, so, we've had these similar conversations with people at, in Sutland, who find it impossible at NIMIC, you know, that they can't possibly walk from the metro to where Maritime Intelligence is. So, what is the distance between?
Yeah, that's here. They have a, you have a diagram. Yeah, of distance.
What's the distance? It's a mile, under a mile?
Right, so-
Point four to the pedestrian gate.
So, the Smithsonian's master plan lists it as 0.4 miles. We, we've measured it less.
So, so, is there some idea that you don't want to put in a pedestrian path? Is that a bone of contention for the Smithsonian? No?
No, I think the issue is the parking ratio. So, if above-
Oh.
Which you're very familiar with.
Well, let's stay with, let's stay with pedestrian. Don't pull that string, yeah.
She just had to say it. Yeah. Now, I really was focused on the pedestrian path.
I'm listening.
So, 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 the Smithsonian is amenable to exploring all this, and when you come back, there's going to be some beautifully designed path as part of this plan?
Well, can you go to, you have a draft master plan.
On our land.
Let's, let's, let's go-
They have committed to doing the bike and pedestrian route. It's in the mass, their draft.
On their property.
On their property.
Let's go to the draft master plan.
I got confused by what you said about-
There's a diagram here that we, in my sheet, it's 23, but I don't know what number it is per you.
So, the top-right image is from their draft master plan, and they rendered the photo on the bottom to show what it would look like. They just don't control the whole route.
So, there are two issues.
I guess that's the part I don't get.
Silver Hill Road and who controls the resources to update, to create this nice pedestrian pathway on the lower image. But if you wouldn't mind going to, it's 23 in my, it's this master plan with the colors, the orange, the purple, and it's got the pedestrian circulation diagram on it.
Slide 20, oh, okay.
I don't know if-
This one?
Well, okay, yeah. Yeah, that's good enough. So, you see the blue dotted line in the lower right-hand, that's the pedestrian entrance. That's, that's-
On the lower right-hand.
Lower right-hand, that's point four.
On Silver Hill Road.
That's right.
Okay.
That's point four miles from the metro station, according to Smithsonian.
Okay, that corner.
You're not sure if that's right, but according to them. Anyway, that's not very far. And what I love is there is a robust, robust pedestrian plan-
Yeah.
For, you can see the entire campus. And so, while some of the measurements in that other diagram you were showing showed much further distances, if you were a pedestrian, right? Wouldn't you enter at that entrance, if you rode on metro, and then you walk around that lovely loop with some blue dots that maybe look like water features? I'm not sure. In the middle of that dotted, in my version-
Yeah, the blue circles.
The blue circles.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management. A lovely stormwater management area, I'm certain of that. And, and so, you know, but this would be, so, the distances really are, as we all know as pedestrians, if you're walking past something that's interesting and beautiful, you'll, you'll not mind the distance, right? But if we track all the way, the distance from metro all the way along Silver Hill Road, it's miserable, right? That's really the point. So, I think that this plan does address the pedestrian scenario, and the issue is, who's going to improve Silver Hill Road to get the pedestrian there?
From the metro station.
From the metro station.
Yeah. Because the, there's a, because who owns what? Like, the usual? Who owns somebody else? So, somebody owns the sidewalk, it's in the outside of-
The county.
The property line? Yeah.
Well, it's actually Maryland State Highway.
Maryland State Highway.
Sorry, I just got confused, because I thought I heard you say that there was some kind of dispute. But that's just about your measuring, you, you think it's more than 0.4 miles, and NCPC thinks, I mean, to the corner of the parcel.
I did a trace of a Google Map, a Google Earth walk from the metro platform to our gate, and it was just a few feet over 2,000 feet. Someone else might do a slightly different Google Earth trace and get something different. I don't know. I haven't-
It's pretty close.
Done a scientific measurement.
There's no issue about distance here.
Ann, could you please identify yourself for the record?
From the Smithsonian's point of view?
I'm Ann Trobridge, Associate Director for Planning.
And there's no issue about distance here. I mean, if it's 2,000 or 1,800 or whatever, that's, that's not the issue, as much as it is the kind of improvements needed to get one safely to that gate. Is that right?
Yes, it would be helpful to have, there are three on-off ramps, only one of which has a stop sign. The others are, you know, coming on and off without. And then, the driveway to MPS's maintenance facility and a secret communications tower are, I don't think there's a stop sign there either. And that's a very wide curb cut. That's 100 feet wide curb cut. The sidewalk kind of does a jog to reduce that somewhat, but it's a very wide driveway.
And, Ms. Trobridge, while you're here, thank you. How have you all engaged the state in that discussion?
We have had several meetings with Maryland National Capitol Parks and Planning Commission in St., Prince George's County, and discussion with the State Highway Administration. I think what we've agreed to is that when it comes time to plan the trail, that we would get together with them and work out the kinds of legal agreements that are necessary for the rights of way, and who polices this, and who maintains it, et cetera. But we, we don't think there's going to be any issue with that.
Commissioner Cash.
I just want to congratulate you, Ms. Trobridge. I mean, I, you've hit the lottery. I hope you come here every time with a project like the one before this. Because, I mean, just, it's a breath of fresh air after that last, to hear that you are open to, you hope that people can use the metro and walk along here, and that it's actual physical barriers to getting to the metro, so.
I won't say that it won't be a challenge to, because the people in our staff who have a viable route on the metro do use the metro. And it's the people who have less access now that it's going to be a bigger challenge for. But over 20 years, I think we can get there.
And I've seen your shuttle buses even coming from downtown. So, I think that, I'm glad to see the commitment and anything that you can do in the planning and moving forward to reduce those spaces, so that we don't come back.
I think it'll take more-
Because we haven't talked a lot about ratios there.
It'll take more resources, but we'll get there.
Sure. But I just wanted to applaud you on your commitment to working with all the affected groups on getting there.
We'll get there. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the EDR? Is there a motion to approve the EDR as submitted? It's been moved, seconded. All in favor of approving the motion, as the EDR is moved, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trobridge, and the whole team at the Smithsonian. It's always nice to have you here. Let's see, okay. Last is Agenda Item 7A, which is an information presentation that we can all be, I think, very proud of, on NCPC's recent work on rethinking security and access in public space. I had the opportunity to introduce last year's public panel, and am pleased that NCPC is taking a true leadership role in convening discussion- taking a true leadership role in convening discussions around this topic and really bringing in national experts and international experts to address these issues. So, thank you, and we're excited to hearing the presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to share with the commission the final proceedings report based on rethinking security and access in public space events held in September of 2019. Issues of security in the public realm have been in the spotlight since the Oklahoma City bombing in 1995 and the events of September 11, 2001. For many years, security interventions focused on perimeter security and centered around protecting buildings and infrastructure. Whenever security needs were elevated, unsightly temporary solutions around federal facilities and grounds restricted access to public space. Over the years, NCPC's approach to perimeter security has evolved, moving away from unsightly bollards and planters to encouraging security solutions that seamlessly... that are seamlessly integrated into buildings and landscapes. The commission has reviewed several projects where the security in public space was a concern. The Air and Space Museum, shown on the left, incorporates security elements in the gathering area at the west end of the site. The intent was to protect areas where people may congregate daily or for special events. In this case, a variety of walls, bollards, and a small water feature... Actually, a water feature also serves as security elements. Similarly, the commission approved perimeter security as part of the Department of State Headquarters Project, where benches and new plantings in a new pocket park help secure the perimeter. Memorial projects must also address security concerns. The World War I memorial uses features like planters to create a secure perimeter. Through planning, policymaking, and project review, NCPC continues to advance new approaches to achieve security and public space goals in the National Capitol Region. In recent years, with an increase of vehicle ramming attacks and other growing threats, the focus has shifted to include parks, plazas, and streets, and to protect people in these spaces. This initiative specifically focused on public spaces and the... that are the social and cultural hub of our communities. Many of these well-used and active public spaces host a variety of uses and programs. Alongside place-making efforts, it is important to assess vulnerabilities that could impact these public uses and understand the related risks. On September 24 and 25 of last year, NCPC, in partnership with American Society of Landscape Architects, held a public event to explore emerging threats in public spaces and to understand how good design and operational responses could address these threats. The following day, NCPC hosted a symposium that engaged federal, local, and private design communities to better understand security expectations. Speakers in the three-panel groups included law enforcement and security experts from the Department of Homeland Security, US Park Police, NYPD, and other planning and design experts. To document the discussion from the events and with a goal to rethink security issues in public and issues of public space use, access, and security, NCPC staff prepared a proceedings report and developed some big ideas. I will now briefly describe each of these big ideas and discuss how NCPC plans to incorporate these in their future work. The first big idea is to understand that security solutions for public spaces are fundamentally different from those for buildings and campuses. Public spaces are successful when they are easily accessible, inviting, and comfortable. Hence, any public space security improvements must consider people's ability to sit, interact, and move around freely. They should allow people to express their democratic values, and they should be flexible to accommodate changing needs such as daily uses, regular gatherings, and occasional large events. In contrast, too many visible security interventions can adversely influence the perception of safety or impact how people use the space, thereby detracting the... detracting a variety of uses and activities. The second big idea is to understand that the threat to people in public spaces is always evolving. With recent incidents in Berlin, Nice, London, Boston, and New York City, the use of vehicles as improvised weapons has become common. Often, physical design solutions cannot predict or completely address these types of threats. As a result, security solutions are often reactionary, trying to prevent the most recent incident from happening again. Some challenges to developing security solutions include not recognizing the risk, designing for the wrong risk or past risk, over-designing, and/or negatively impacting the public space use and users. The third big idea stresses the importance of collaborative risk assessments. Prior to making any security-related improvements, a thorough risk assessment can encourage contextually sensitive solutions while meeting security needs. This chart by Susan Silverberg of Civic Moxie lists key players and motivations that can drive security improvements. It is important to note that motivations such as liability fears, market competition, and key players such as building owners or product manufacturers can often influence security improvements. In such cases, relying on best practices and outside or third-party risk analysis can be helpful. The fourth big idea emphasizes the need to consider a spectrum of solutions for public space security design. More specifically, it means that security in public space should not be limited to just physical design improvements such as bollards, fences, and low walls. Successful security solutions often make public spaces pedestrian-only on temporary or permanent basis during small or large events. They rely on human security presence such as community ambassadors that complement law enforcement presence. They rely on better coordination and sharing of resources between public agencies and private sector, and they incorporate advancements in technology such as cameras and monitoring. The fifth big idea emphasizes the need to develop and share a diverse toolkit of security design solutions. Such a toolkit would include tested and rated bollards, streetscape elements, and street furniture in a variety of materials, sizes, and styles. Additionally, these elements would be flexible to adapt as needed and be readily available as a shared resource. The next big idea builds upon the previous, but also stresses context-sensitive solutions that employ best practices to address pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. Traffic calming measures around and through highly pedestrian public spaces include slower vehicular speeds, redirection of vehicular traffic, temporary street closures, and sharing the street space with a range of transportation options. The seventh big idea emphasizes that physical design improvement should consider approaches that are multipurpose. Security improvements can also fulfill drainage and stormwater management needs, address sustainability and resiliency issues, and even serve as a work of art. Since security in public space does not fit a one-size-fix-all approach, we need to rely on regular security assessments. The eighth big idea of the report stresses the need for regular monitoring and evaluation. Similarly, an understanding of social behavior and pedestrian movement, and by creating a more public awareness, people can help report suspicious activities and hopefully prevent an attack before it happens. The ninth big idea is to seek prior research, funding, and guidance from a variety of sources. Federal and district agencies, such as the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the District's Homeland Security Emergency Management Agency, offer funding, training, and guidance to make security improvements. The last big idea notes that large events have the advantage of adequate lead time and organized special event process and plenty of law enforcement presence. Similarly, we need to evaluate security issues for small gatherings and planned events held in urban parks and plazas that are actively used and host recurring activities. To describe some of the next steps, NCPC will continue this work through case study research and workshops. Several federal and district agencies have expressed interest in collaborating through workshops that will consider prototypes of urban parks that host regular events, civic plazas that adapt to allow seasonal markets, and streets that allow permanent or temporary closures. These workshops will help us test and refine the big ideas developed in the proceedings report. It will also inform specific guidance and policies in the Urban Design and Security section of the Urban Design Element and ultimately help guide the commission's review of future projects. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Singh. I just want to say it's really laudable that this commission is leading the national discussion about this. Such an important issue and can really enhance the quality of experiencing these public spaces, and we should all be proud of the work that the staff and its... Our leader, the director, is doing to guide this in a national conversation. So, thank you. Any comments, questions? Yes?
Sure. I always want to press the point that if we can design the security mechanisms that are usable... I think you mentioned sort of in passing, but I really feel that's great for taxpayers to see things that they can sit on or use when they're in these situations, so.
We'll love that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I think then this concludes February's open session agenda. The commission's next meeting is March 5, 2020, and if there's no other business, the open session is now adjourned. Nice work, everybody. Thank you. Good work.